Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the June twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five meeting of the Town of Chatham Select Board. Please note this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly thereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify the chair, seeing none. Pursuant to Governor Healy's March twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five signing of Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty five extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty, until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty seven, this meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately address the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number one five zero eight nine four five four four one zero, Conference ID two zero three three eight six four nine one pound, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Chatham TV, Xfinity Channel one oh seven two, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide real-time access. We will post a record, a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as available. First order of businesses to establish a quorum, Ms. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Dykens.
Present.
Mr. Matters.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
And the Chair is present. We have a fairly busy agenda tonight. We're going to try to move this along efficiently. We will start with public announcements and agenda item requests, then we have a public here, three public hearings. One is on new water rates presented by the water, by the staff on behalf of the Water and Sewer Commissioners, a proposed, a proposed increase in the rates, a request for increased sewer flow at eight seventy eight, eight eighty, eight eighty Main Street, that will come first. And then proposed construction permit fees, fee increases presented by the staff. We will have public comments on the business agenda, and I'll go over the business agenda later, but I will announce right now that I will be allowing public comments, contemporaneous public comment on item six C, which is Lighthouse Beach, and item six G, which is the Ellis property at one twenty seven Old Harbor Road. So first entertain public announcements, I have several, perhaps I should give those first. A reminder that there is no Select Board meeting on July first next week. Secondly, the annual fireworks spectacular will be on July second, two thousand and twenty five at Veterans Field. Please plan your visit to downtown Chatham accordingly. Third, the Chatham Independence Day Parade will be on Saturday, July fourth, and begins at nine thirty AM. Seating can be reserved with chairs and blankets beginning at two thirty AM on July fourth, two thousand and twenty five. Please plan accordingly.
Friday, July fourth.
What did I say?
Saturday.
That's what it reads, Saturday. I'm sorry. Thank you.
It is Friday.
Friday, July fourth. That's Independence Day. Thank you. I have a couple additional ones. We have been, the board has been interviewing multiple candidates for committees, including many incumbents. We are approaching the end of the fiscal year, the town's year of June thirtieth. Any incumbent who has not been reappointed as of June thirtieth does continue in office until a successor is appointed. So there will be continuity on all our boards and committees, including the regulatory boards. We are going to have an interviewing session on July eighth, and at our evening meeting of this board at five o'clock on July eighth, we will be taking votes in various, various committee appointments for which we have interviewed, including the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Historical Commission, the Airport Commission, and the Affordable Housing Trust. And lastly, with respect to the list of agenda item requests about which I've talked several times, I remind everyone that pursuant to the vote of the board, anyone who has items on that list that they have requested, including Select Board members, have until July tenth to renew their request by contacting our administrative assistant Kathy Lewis by email, phone, or written communication. And I will say that it is my intention that any requests that are on that agenda list from members of this, from individuals who no longer are on the Select Board, and there are a couple, those items will be eliminated unless they are requested by someone else. That's my intention. Thank you. So are there any items from the board, agenda item requests or announcements? Any from the public, I mean, anyone in this room? Don't see anyone. So is that you, Steve Buckley? S B, it says.
Yes, it is Steve Buckley.
You're up.
Yes, it is.
Can we have the volume raised, excuse me, Steve, can we have the volume raised a little bit?
Okay, is that any better?
That's much better. Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, yes, I had checked yesterday with the administrative officer in the town offices, and Kathy said to, yes, I'm verbally resubmitting as I originally did all the three, I'm sorry, four agenda items that are listed in the back of the thing. I won't read them out to save time, but I just wanted to get on the record as saying, I am resubmitting them, and I will submit an email that will go into more depth about why those should be kept. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else have any public announcement or agenda item request? Okay, let's proceed with our agenda. We have three public hearings. The first one is Water and Sewer Commissioners consider a request for increased sewer flow of two hundred sixty-six point fifty-five gallons per day for eight seventy-eight to eight eighty Main Street Chatham to accommodate a new floor plan consisting of two hundred ninety-one square feet of retail space, fourteen point fifty-five gallons per day, two bedrooms, two hundred and twenty gallons per day, and three-chair salon, three hundred gallons per day, which would result in a total of five hundred and thirty-four point fifty-five gallons per day flow. I will ask our clerk to read the public hearing notice. Stuart?
Town of Chatham Water and Sewer Commissioners Public Hearing Notice. The Chatham Select Board, acting as Water and Sewer Commissioners, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, at five PM in the Town Hall Annex Large Meeting Room, two sixty-one George Ryder Road, to consider a request for increased sewer flow, excuse me, of two six six decimal five five G P D for eight seven eight dash eight eight zero Main Street Chatham to accommodate a new floor plan consisting of two hundred and ninety-one square feet of retail space, fourteen point five five G P D, two bedrooms, two two zero G P D, and three-chair salon, three hundred G P D, which would result in a total of five hundred and thirty-four decimal five five G P D flow. All interested parties are encouraged to attend either in person or remotely using the team's meeting link in the posted agenda.
Thank you. Who's going to present this? Rob?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I am a little unprepared, but.
Well, I don't, there's an applicant, Caitlin Deegan. I don't see her on. And the property owner is Nancy McCarrick. So I know this is before the Water and Sewer Committee, and since you're liaison, perhaps you just could present what's happening here.
Sure. So it's a change of use for the property with some increased sewage flow expected. T P W had no concerns. We presented our recommendation to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, and they had unanimously supported it as well.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the board? Any, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience, either online or in person or on the phone, have any comment or questions? Okay, it seems pretty straightforward. There is a recommendation from the Water and Sewer Committee to approve this. Anyone have a motion? I assume this is going to be a hairstyling salon, it sounds like.
That's correct.
It was a dance studio.
Was a dance studio, so that's why there's an increase. But apparently the, both the, your department and the Water and Sewer Committee feels that the system can handle this.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, a move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I'll call for a vote. Ms. Davis.
Hi.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the Chair says aye. It's approved. Thank you. We'll close that public hearing. The next public hearing has to do with in proposed increases to town water rates, and I'll ask the clerk to read that public hearing notice.
Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, at five PM in the Large Meeting Room at the Town Hall Annex, two sixty-one George Ryder Road, to consider increases to the town's water rates as follows.
Yeah, I don't think you have to read all those in the matrix, but you can read the bottom line.
Sure. All interested parties are encouraged to participate in person or via the team's meeting link provided in the posted agenda.
Okay, so this is a matter that has been before, and this is a public hearing. We will entertain public comment at the appropriate time. This is a matter that's been before the Water and Sewer Committee and the town staff, both the D P W and the finance departments for, for a while. I've attended several meetings, so I guess, Rob, you might want to kick it off. I know we have a consultant available online, too.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rob Failey, Director of Public Works. Over the past year, Carrie and I have been working with Waterworth, a utility rate consulting firm, to evaluate and model potential water rate adjustments. Pending rate increases have been noted by me during numerous public presentations, by Carrie at the F Y twenty-six Budget Summit in October, and even by the Select Board during normal, regular meetings. The proposed rate structure underwent numerous revisions by the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee on multiple occasions at their monthly meetings. We had originally proposed an across-the-board rate increase to provide enough revenue to cover the budget and build back the undesigned fund balance. The Water and Sewer Advisory Committee felt it was important to recommend a rate structure that is designed on a tiered or sliding scale with modest increases for lower-usage customers and proportionally higher increases for higher-volume users, promoting both fairness and water conservation. The Water and Sewer Advisory Committee agreed to the rates presented here on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five. There was a forecast model included in your agenda packet, which I know contains a lot of information. At this point, I'd like, I see Ari Chawla, who is with Waterworth, I'd like to hand it over to him. He's online, so he can illustrate the rationale behind Chatham's needs, show the forecast model and how it was constructed, and then go over the proposed rate structure.
Okay, Ari, do you want to take it, take it on right now? Thank you. Welcome.
Sir. Hey, everyone. Okay, so, hi, everyone. My name is Ari. As Rob pointed out, I'm with the Client Success Team here at Waterworth. Thank you for inviting me. And just to provide some more context to Rob's introduction, we are a software platform that empowers local governments like Chatham to achieve finances sustainably while balancing affordability. And I know through all of our conversations that this can be tough, but it can be done through the practice of what we call as continuous revenue management, which is two things. And one is the life financial forecast model, which you'll see here today. And two is keeping these conversations, keeping elected officials informed on a continuous basis about the financial reality, so you can make those smart decisions quickly and efficiently. Now, I'm going to pause here for a second if anyone has any questions about my introduction before I dive deep into those models and the rationale.
No, please proceed. Thanks.
Okay, perfect. I'm just going to begin by sharing my screen. Can everyone see it?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, so there's a lot of pretty colors in front of us, and we're going to break it down step by step into four different parts. Right now, what are you looking, what are you looking at is the Waterworth Dashboard for the Water Service Area. And in the past few months, what we have done is we have taken the actuals values and we have constructed this forecast for the future. So starting with part number one, we have our operating expenses, which you could see on the Y-axis, you have the dollar amounts. In the X-axis, you have the years. This model starts from two thousand and twenty-two, and you could see it track from two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, four, and five. That's when we got the actuals and budget values in there from Carrie. And after that, especially for the operating expenses, we're forecasting about three percent inflationary increases, which is why you see a linear increase in all of our costs for operating expenses moving forward up until two thousand and twenty-two, where the model pauses. Next, we're going to add another layer, which will be our current debt service. Again, this is for all those big projects that we had, the water treatment plant, the wells five and eight, and the wells ten and eleven construction, which is why you see it really peak and slowly start to pay off and stabilize around two thousand and twenty-eight. We also want to maybe discuss about some of the future capital projects, which is for PFAS, which is where you see that light blue layer on top, and that's just one hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five thousand getting added on top in the out years beyond two thousand and twenty-eight for some of those foreseeable future projects. The last part of the revenue requirements is when it comes to our reserve-funded capital. Now, in the past, we have funded some of our smaller maintenance projects with reserve-funded capital. We're also putting a placeholder of around five hundred thousand dollars on small projects that maybe the funds may be used up for. And that five hundred thousand dollars continues moving forward with a slight inflation figure in. That concludes part one of the dashboard, where we have all of the revenue requirements stacked up together from the operating expenses all the way down to the reserve-funded capital expenses. What I'm going to do next is part number two, where I'm going to start layering those revenues. We'll start with our rate revenue, which is a sale of service. And you can see that in this model, those bars, which is about, let's say, in, predicted for about three point one six million dollars in two thousand and twenty-five, remains flat. It doesn't really change or increase in the future. And then I'm going to start layering in other operating revenue, any developer contributions, but not in this case. And then finally, we have our non-operating revenue. So all of these together, which is the three parts, the sales service, other operating, and non-operating, bring up our second part, which is our revenues. It's almost as, as buildings coming forward and even mounted to the back, creating the city skyline as picture for us. Before I dive into the third part, which is our cash position, how the understood cash fluctuates with this particular model, something to point out is that whenever you see these gaps, whenever you see these mountains being taller than our buildings in the foregrounds, that's when we notice as a deficit in our budget. In two thousand and twenty-five, you can notice that that gap exists and moving forward as well, which is why, to no surprise, you can see the cash start to dwindle down over the years. And in two thousand and twenty-five, our opening and the opening cash balance here is close to five hundred thousand dollars. And by two thousand and twenty-six, we're seeing the understood cash go down to about below zero to almost two hundred and fifty-three. That's our prediction for at least the opening cash balance for this year. And looking at this, you say that, okay, I definitely have some ground to catch up on. We definitely need to meet our expenses. But not only do we need to make sure that we, our cash position in our scenarios, our, in our proposed scenario stay above zero, we also want it to stay above an operating threshold line. Now, what do I mean by that? That's our fourth part, which is one of our guidelines to help us with our rate planning and rate scenarios. The operating threshold in this case is about four months of operating expenses and two months of debt that we want to make sure represents our minimum cash balances. Ideally, we want to stay above this at all times for any unexpected costs that may come up in the year. So clearly, in two thousand and twenty-five, we see ourselves below the red door line, which is why we want to make sure that from twenty-six onwards, we're able to rectify that and stay above the red door line in the future, so we can tackle any unexpected costs without dipping into our other reserves. Combining all of that together brings, brings together all of our different forecasts. And now I'm just going to take a moment to pause if any of the Select Board members has any questions about how the dashboard works before I move ahead to the proposed solution.
Any questions? Jeff?
Yeah, I just got a couple of quick ones. It's a great graph, it's very well explained, very clear. I just, what are other operating revenues and developer contributions? What are they?
In this case, developer contributions are not existing, just a tab that I have open. It doesn't really apply to your committee. It's just one of our options. And when it comes to the other operating revenue, something that would count, would be miscellaneous revenue, that would count as other operating rental and leases and so on. That's included in one of our tables.
But, but there was no, there are no developer contributions. Okay, thanks.
No developer contributions. Yeah, it's just a, it's a tab that's available in the tool itself. It's not applicable to what we have.
But, but this is our data.
Yes, it is your data. Just the tool. The tool has that.
Okay, thanks.
It's like if any other community has developer contribution.
Any other, Corey?
I'm, I'm good.
I'm going, I'm going to hold on my, my question. I'm going to let him finish, because I think it may be a little more appropriate. I do, but I do have a question.
Any other questions from the board at this time? Ari, please continue.
Thank you. So moving ahead, we're going to, we created a couple of scenarios, but in this case, we landed one with our discussion with the committee. Now, you could see that in two thousand and twenty-six, we're very close to the July first fiscal date, so we could see that we're going to start somewhere around the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar mark, and we're going to be maybe making sure we're afloat with our restricted funds. But what I would say is that we're looking to rebound and make sure that we can get above that operating threshold by two thousand and twenty-eight. And part of the plan is to start increasing our revenues for twenty-six, which is why we're coming with this proposal in the first place. So after, you could see this particular diagram that we're able to rebound by, from twenty-six and by twenty-eight, we're able to be above the operating threshold. You can start to see the cash release increase, and just to answer your question there, we can always reevaluate how our cash is looking in the upcoming years. If you feel our cash is going higher than the operating threshold, that's great. Maybe there's some extra, and it's something that I discussed with Rob and Carrie very closely, is that what if there are more projects, then this cash position that you can see inclining and increase over the years may start to stabilize a bit more. If not, we can also reduce the pressure on the rates and keep it more gentle in the future. Now, for the actual rates themselves, when I tackle away and move away from the model, is if I head towards the PowerPoint itself. So our proposed rates, and can everyone see my screen? I just want to confirm once again.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. So just to look at the increases themselves that allowed us to rebound from our cash position in the first place is where we had the current rates that you can see on the left, just map all of that out. And on the right is where we made some adjustments to all of those rates, and as Rob mentioned and the committee, we all, we tried to go for more, more increase for everyone that is in the low-income and low-usage category. So just to run down, give a rundown of the numbers really quickly, for the winter rates that we have for the service charges, it's about thirty percent increase, and then for the summer, it's about forty-five for all of those different rates across the board for the meter sizes. Then when it comes to the different tiers, the meter charges, for the winter, for the zero to ten, the low-income and low-usage department, we have gone for like thirty percent, fifty percent for the summer, for zero to ten, then for ten to thirty, it's about forty percent. And then it's a sixty percent that comes in for ten to thirty for the summer, and the rest go from sixty to seventy, and they range beyond that. And the highest here, this is where people use more than a hundred CCF per bill, they're being charged in the last year for about seventy percent, eighty percent respectively.
Ari, can you stop there for a second? Just wanted, so that people understand, when you talk about the service charge, that's the base charge that, that you get before the town starts billing you for your actual usage. Is that correct?
Yes.
So for a five-eighths meter, which is very common, winter seventeen fifty is current, it will go up, it would go up to twenty-two seventy-five, summer thirty-five, fifty to seventy-five. And I think, maybe you're going to say this, but it's just, again, for the benefit of those listening, the bulk of users, in terms of numbers, are in the, when you talk about the tiers, are in the zero to ten and ten to thirty categories. Is that not correct? It's well over the majority of the water rate users, water users in town.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Thank you, sir, for that input. And the last two parts that anyone touched on was irrigation services. Based on our discussions that we have with the committee as well, we realized that we were undercharging for irrigation, which is why you can see, and also, it's only being charged in the summer, so we've increased those base fees, the service charges, and also we've increased it for irrigation meter charges that have really risen or like risen. And you can see that two parts that really match is that the irrigation service charges or the base fees matches what we have for the five-eighths summer fees, and for irrigation meter charges, the ten seventy-one matches what we have for the highest users altogether. There's also a discussion about penalties, but I'll leave that for the committee and Rob to discuss about. But these are just the proposed changes that we have. And what I'm going to do now is analyze it a bit further and break it down by the average bill in terms of usage and so on.
Excuse me for one, excuse me, Corey, you have a question?
I want to throw, ask a question, because you just brought up the irrigation component, and And if I'm, if I'm off base and second throwing this question in, just let me know and we can move it on. But we're dealing with raising irrigation rate, current seventeen fifty, proposed fifty seventy five. Now, irrigation has always been a hot topic for the water usage. It seems to be the elephant in the room. We've had this discussion for years. I think, you know, the sum level, some of our lost revenue is those people who have decided to go to private wells. So they go pay whatever it is, they're well driven, they're off the town system, which was, which is good because we didn't want to take treated water and use it for irrigation lawns. So that was, that was, that was a plus. The minus is we're losing the revenue. And now we're dealing with the current irrigation inventory. We have something like fifteen hundred registered irrigation systems in this town. An unknown unnumbered of unregistered, so we don't know what kind of number to place on that. You know, of the fifteen hundred, I think they only eight hundred already have their second meter. So just over half have that second meter in place that we can potentially charge a separate rate for. So we still have seven hundred ish, you know, registered systems without a second meter that we're losing potential revenue out of. And of those people, like, what is the timetable to get that second meter on them? Because that's, it's been a couple of years we've been discussing this. I mean, I've heard numbers like fifteen, twenty percent of those that remaining seven hundred have paid for a second meter but still don't have it installed. So there seems to be a big hunk of potential revenue that I don't want to dismiss because we're talking about raising rates, especially very sensitive about raising rates in the lower tier because the lower tier users, you know, may be more economically challenged sometime, I don't know. So I'm very sensitive of how we do this in an equitable manner, so.
I'll turn to Rob to answer your question, if that, are you?
I'm done for the moment, yes.
I'll turn, I'll turn to Rob in a second. I just wanted to point out that we raised rates, I think around two thousand eighteen last time. And at that time, for the first time, we charged a different rate for irrigation, a higher rate. As you can see in the chart, in the lower left, winter, three dollars and thirty cents for the usage. Summer, five ninety five versus the amounts that are shown in the columns above. And you're absolutely right, Corey, that approximately half of folks who have a registered irrigation system are not on, don't have the meter installed. So they're using water and being billed at the lower rate. And that's, that's not a good thing. And the committee did consider bumping up the rate for those that are registered but not installed to a hundred percent of what the others are paying. And town council had something to say about that. So I wanted to just throw that into the mix. And Rob, can you try to respond or you or Carrie to Corey's question, questions?
Sure, yeah, working with town council, we tried to figure out now a logical approach to this. We couldn't charge, we couldn't target, say unfairly, people who have not, you know, a different, a different rate for people who have not installed that second meter. Our software doesn't allow two different irrigation rates to be charged. We were looking at some kind of a, like a fine or some kind of a surcharge, maybe that we can charge those folks who are using town water to irrigate their lawns, but they don't have a second meter. Still don't have all the details worked out just yet, but we're looking at different avenues to do that. We're also working with town council to draft a stern letter to warn those folks that it is coming. If they don't have a registered irrigation meter, system and a second meter installed, that these fines are coming. We haven't received that letter yet.
We, we know who they are, but what we don't know, as Corey mentioned, is who is out there that had, that has an irrigation system, but it's not registered with the town and is using water at the lower rate. And the folks, the eight hundred or so that are in compliance, they're paying a higher rate. So that's an issue and it was an issue for the committee. Any, any more conversation from the board about the irrigation at this moment? Okay. Anything from either of you? I'm gonna, in a moment, ask the chair, the vice chair of the committee to come forward. But Ari, why don't you can continue with your presentation? And are you going to talk about comparisons with some of our surrounding towns?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so before I get into comparisons, I just wanted to share the last two parts, which was just the average bill. Because we really wanted to focus on protecting the lower income and low users. You could see that on the top, on the, on the top of the table, you can see the consumption for CCF hundred cubic feet. And it's, it's for two, ten, thirty and fifty for the different tiers. And you can see that the bottom line is even with all the changes in the top portion of the table, you see the current rates and then you see the proposed rates in the bottom, the net increase in dollars and finally see the percentages. So you can see how the people are consuming between two to ten are still increasing, an increase of thirty percent. But people higher than ten, and as you get to thirty and fifty, are definitely seeing a higher increase of about thirty six to forty nine percent for those users. And it is also consistent in the summer. That was for the winter. This is for the summer where it's much higher and also to target for conservation. So you can see it's forty six, forty seven, and then it's fifty five, sixty four in terms of how the bills are changing in terms of our percentage and the dollar amounts right above it. And lastly, just want to show it for the irrigation summer, the same theory and principle is true. Where you see that it's fifty four percent for people that are using what two, sixty seven for ten and then seventy four and seventy six inclining. Okay, so moving ahead, we're gonna go to the community cost comparisons.
Mr. Chair, if I can just ask Rob to speak to, what is the billing cycle? Is the billing cycle monthly, bimonthly or quarterly?
The billing is quarterly. We have a rotating reading on meters where we read each meter, a third of the town every month. So it's a, it's kind of a rotating thing, but it's not billed quarterly.
Okay.
The average bill is a quarterly bill.
Quarterly bill.
Okay, thank you.
And that would be for the service charge plus usage. And I just want to explain, a lot of people may not be familiar with the, the units, the two units. So a unit of measurement is one hundred cubic feet or seven hundred and forty eight gallons. So that's what one unit of measurement is. So to put that in perspective, the current summer rate, we pay one cent for two and a half gallons. The proposed summer rate, this is for the lower tier, you would get one point four or five gallons for one penny. So these are really, it's a large volume of water. I just wanted to put that in perspective for everybody.
Thank you. Ari?
Thank you, Rob. And moving on to the community cost comparison, I broke it down with winter and summer rates, but I know how different our rates are from the three other communities that I was comparing, which was Yarmouth and Orleans. But what I want to do next is just describe, I can probably zoom in a little bit as well. What I want to do is, I know that the winter and summer can paint two different pictures. So what I did was I basically averaged our summer and winter costs. And that's when we got this final picture where you can see Chatham, Yarmouth and Orleans together and how much the totals are for the respective consumption parents. So you can see if you go, let's say we just take thirty, for example, it's going to be one eighty three for us quarterly. This Yarmouth is quite low, Orleans is the, is also somewhere there in one twenty two. But when it comes to this, people that are about below thirty, when it comes to ten and two, you can see that we're in the, they're going to be paying about seventy two dollars and fifty five cents quarterly compared to fifty and ninety nine. And the same applies for someone that's consuming two, two hundred cubic feet, which will be forty three ninety one, thirty eight, ten for Yarmouth and then sixty six point two two for Orleans.
Ari, we don't, we don't have this material in the packet and it's kind of hard to read it on the screen. The legend is, is, is small. If we could enlarge it a little bit even more, if that's possible.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But the, the table.
Now, these are the proposed, they're not, do you, you, can we go, do you have a slide? I know you had one in at the Water and Sewer Committee that shows the current comparison. The current Chatham rates with these other two towns.
I have already the proposed, actually, hold on a second. I think this would be the current, I only have the proposed at the moment, but I can show you a sample of the current as well, if you'd like.
Yes.
Maybe in the, in the tool itself. Okay, give me one second.
Okay. I'm, I bring it up because it was, it was discussed and shown at the Water and Sewer Committee and the Finance Committee, excuse me, has argued that we have among the lowest rates in the state. And that may be good, may be bad. I, I think you can argue that either way. It was pointed out by argument at the Water and Sewer Committee that one reason we might have the low, low rates is that our rate payers have financed significant infrastructure in the town and other towns haven't undertaken that.
Yes, sir. So I'm just gonna show it in the tool. I know this doesn't look as pretty, but I would say that I'm just gonna showcase the other two rates. Okay, so I'm just gonna showcase that. This is for residential, five eighths meters, the same measurements two, ten, thirty and fifty that we saw on the table. I'm gonna zoom in.
That's the usage.
Yes, yes, sir. I'm gonna zoom in just so that we all get a clear picture. Can you all see that all right? Should I zoom in even further? Okay, perfect. So I'm just gonna compare, let's say if you wanted to compare the winter with what we're looking at for all of the different months for, and all the different organizations as well, you can see Chatham's current rates, Orleans, Yarmouth. In the winter, we pay about seventeen point fifty for the fixed and three point five is the variable cost, which brings up a twenty one, which is much lower than the sixty six point two two by Orleans and thirty eight by Yarmouth. So we are the lowest in that category. If I change it to the summer rates, let's say a year six, you can see that we're gonna be rising up to forty one dollars for the quarterly bill, sixty six by Orleans and thirty eight. So we're in the middle of the pack when it comes to summer.
Orleans and Yarmouth do not have a differentiated rate for the summer versus winter. Is that, is that the case?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That is the case.
Any questions on this before we go back to the comparison with the proposed? Okay, let's, let's go back to your, your other slides.
Sorry, sir. Okay, perfect. Which is why when you look at the community cost comparison with the proposed rates, you can see that we do definitely see an increase for the categories of anyone that's between in thirty and fifty. But we do stay very competitive and quite close to, to the categories that are for consumption, rather, for two and ten, hundred cubic feet. You can see that we're very comparable to the amounts.
So in Chatham is for two, it's forty three dollars and ninety one cents total. Yarmouth, thirty eight dollars and ten cents. And Orleans sixty, is that sixty six dollars and twenty two cents? For ten units and Chatham, seventy two dollars and fifty five cents. Yarmouth, fifty dollars and, thank you, forty cents. And Orleans, ninety nine dollars and eighty eight cents. So we don't know if these other towns are, are undertaking a review of their rates, do we?
Well, I, I do work with all of them.
Okay.
But I, I would say that everyone, without giving any specific details, a lot of the communities are considering it around the area. I work with a lot in the Cape Cod area as well and then outside the Cape Cod area. So a lot of those communities are considering and or have also got rate increases.
Are there any questions, comments from the board on this slide? All right, Ari, please continue.
Sir, thank you. So the last part that I had here for us was just the distribution that you were talking about, sir, which was breaking down the residential five eights into different tiers. You can see that where it comes to the account distribution, majority of it, sixty three percent lie between zero to ten, hundred cubic feet. Then it drops down to twenty seven, lie between ten to thirty. And then we have thirty to fifty is five percent and then fifty to hundred is four. And then eventually is two percent is above hundred per bill. So that gives a better picture in terms of why we're increasing our base fees, why we're having general increases because majority of our customers also lie between under thirty, we'd say ninety percent.
Does that complete, does that complete your presentation?
Yes, sir, it does.
Thank you. Rob, do you have any more comments or Carrie, do you have anything? Otherwise, I was gonna, I see the vice chair of Bruce Bogart is, I don't think the chair is on Jeff Colby, chair of the Water and Sewer Committee. Bruce, did you want to have anything that you might want to comment on if you would like to come to the podium?
Bruce Bogart is vice chair of the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee. We spent a lot of time going through this with Ari and very comfortable that we worked out the best balance as opposed to just a flat fifty percent increase across the board for everybody. The, the key issue that the committee had that remains unaddressed at this time is the fact that there are people with registered or unregistered irrigation systems using the processed town water to go on their lawn and they're paying the lowest rate possible in the town. We have two databases, I, I worked to pull together a border health database as well as the D T W database to try to compare. And I also matched it up to the water irrigation survey that was done in twenty twenty three, I believe. And that was a voluntary thing and obviously didn't get everybody in town. But I tried to do comparisons to see, maybe somebody pulled an irrigation permit, but they ended up with well water. I did a match of all the databases, came up with only the possibility of four. So that's not where the hidden pile is. But we do have names and addresses for a minimum of eight hundred and sixty five people in town, residents in town that said they had an irrigation system but do not have a second meter. And I know Rob's been working with town council and I would support the board to make that a priority. Because right now is these, water rates are going to increase and it's going to be the users following the guidelines. They're gonna pay for the people that have irrigation that don't bother to follow up with it.
Thank you. I just wanted to, before I turn to the, to the public, I just wanted to note that in the staff memo, there is this sentence, "Without a rate increase, the water fund is projected to run a deficit." I mean, that's why we're here tonight. The approach that this consultant has taken is different from what we've done in the past. And we, Jeff and Corey, and I think Shereen was on back when we did the rates in two thousand eighteen or nineteen. It's a different approach. This is a, I would say, a bit more scientific. It's an interesting approach. When you measure the projected expenditures against the projected revenues, you know, we have a problem we have to deal with. I don't think that the select board is acting as Water and Sewer Commissioners, Commissioners has to take any kind of action tonight. But I did want to ask the question, the proposal was to have, from the staff, was to have this ready for a billing cycle, for the billing cycle beginning July one. Is that, what if we, we don't do anything tonight? You're not going to have that. I'm not ready to vote. Yeah.
If we don't increase the rates as of July first, then because our billing cycle is quarterly, then we're pushing it out to the next quarter, which would be October first. And we'd potentially lose six hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue for F Y twenty twenty six.
Okay. Well, that's good to know, but we have to also make sure we do the right thing tonight. So with that, I'm going to open it up to public comment or questions. If anyone, I will start with. If anyone, I'll start with folks in the audience here in person, if they want to come to, anyone wants to come to the podium. Okay, anyone else in the audience? All right. Oh, Mr. Hallgren, John.
John Hallgren, South Chatham. And so I spent a couple hours doing my own spreadsheet, because I was curious as to how this might affect me and also those units. I also did some calculations to translate it into more or less maybe a gallons per day, so people might better understand. For instance, the two units translates basically as I would figure into a gallons per day of approximately about sixteen gallons per day. I'm by myself when I'm down in Florida, and I don't use a lot of water. I use like twenty-two gallons a day. So I think maybe a quantity of three would be more appropriate. But anyway, in either case, both of those, the annual increase would be sort of basically in the fifty to fifty-five dollars for that person when you figure everything. If they were using that same level usage per year, you know, per year for every quarter and the increase in the meter rates, that would be that. In my case, I have a very high peak when my summer customers are there. So I'm using, last year I used sixty-two units. And then in the slay off season, I was using nineteen. So that would translate into an increased cost for me to basically close to three hundred dollars. It's not a whole lot, but it's something that leads back to this whole transfer station issue of, you know, for some of the higher volume users, this could be an increased cost that they should have known about ahead of time so they could possibly adjust their rates, you know, revenue rates for their customers to get more money for this. So that was my only concern was that, you know, the implementation being sort of right now, if it was, you know, yes, if you delay it, it's kind of, you're gonna not make some money, but I also was wondering that if you implement it effectively July first, what happens to somebody whose billing cycle is gonna then be partially in June and then partially in July and August? So technically, if it's affected July first, then the June usage, how do you know how much was, you follow that question?
Rob, do you want to respond?
Sure. We have not billed for June's usage yet, so if it were to go up July first, that would be impacted by the June statement.
Right, but you see, my point is that it would be technically should be effective for water used after July first, and that's including water that was used prior to that. So that was something I wanted to just bring up. It's a little fine point, but it's something to be considered.
John, can I interrupt you just to ask, how much was the increase that you projected?
For my own usage and so on, for assuming that, I only counted my high usage quarter, my sort of lower usage quarter, I ignored the two quarters when I'm basically not here, and I just counted those as meter rate, you know, just the meter rates. But I'm on a one-inch meter, so my total anticipated additional cost would be basically two hundred and ninety dollars.
And that's for your, for your, all your units?
Right, right, basically based upon sixty-two units during the summer and...
No, I meant you have cottages, right?
Correct, right.
That's okay.
Right. Now, also, basically, just as for FY, the ten units, that would translate into a usage of approximately eighty-two gallons per day. So I think, you know, I just, because something I think can relate more to gallons per day than these CCF things and so on, so that's why I just wanted to give some additional numbers. Thirty gallons translates into, I mean, thirty units translates to two hundred and forty-five gallons per day, and fifty is four hundred and eight. So you're gonna be really using some heavy water to get up to those rates, so I don't think there's too many people in town, some of the hotels and so on, probably will fall into that. But it was just I was curious, because obviously when I saw the thing about forty percent increase in the meter rates and, you know, some of these high increases, I was like, they increased my rates in Florida, but they did it over a period of four years. So I'm like, you know, kind of like hindsight, maybe you guys should have, you know, increased the rates a little sooner and not done it so dramatically at this point, but...
I have one other question, because you're a renter of cottages.
Correct.
You rent two people. So does, if the rates were to go into effect July one...
Right.
How does that, and I'm not trying to ask you a leading question, but how does that impact your determination of how much your weekly rentals should be?
Because it would only be basically around three hundred dollars for the year and so on, it's not gonna really make that much of a difference, but my concern was for some of the businesses that do use a high volume, let's say like a laundromat or something of that nature, how, or some of the hotels, how that might, you know, really more affect them, you know, and it's being a cost that they didn't know at the beginning of the season.
Okay.
That was just my point. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Rob, I just wanted, one point that came out in the conversation with Mr. Hallgren, and he talked about phasing them in. My understanding from the meetings I attended of the Water and Sewer Committee was that if this were implemented, it would be a one-time very large increase, but the intention was what, every year or every five years after, it would be, there would be a five percent increase, was that?
It would be an annual increase. One large increase this year, and then I think Ari carried a five percent increase going forward.
For how many years? Ari, do you want to talk, I think it's important for the public and the board to understand that.
Yes, sir. So I, in the model itself and images that you see, it is carrying a five percent throughout for indefinite period of time, but what I would say to counter that is that we at Waterworth and every single client, every single client that we work with, always evaluate the rates on a continuous basis. It's every year we sit back and look at the rates and say that, is the five percent too much? Do we, should we dial it back to maybe two percent, three percent? It all depends on our revenue requirements. And if, let's say, capital projects do come in, let's say in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-thirty, that we need that five percent, this five percent needed in order to generate enough revenue to spend money on those payments, then we'll continue doing that. But it is gonna be drastically lower. It's not gonna be as large of an increase as the one we're asking for right now.
So you're basically recommending that annually there should be a review, and I would assume that that could contemplate that in some years there might be no increase?
Yes, it all depends, right, on the revenue requirements.
Theoretically, it could be a decrease.
Theoretically, yes, but it depends on capital.
Okay, all right, thank you. Turning back to the hearing, Nicole Stern, is that you? I think I saw yours first.
Yes, thank you very much. I have to go back because I was very involved years ago with the meters. And we talked about the people, and you already named the amount, that followed the rules, put in a second meter, and then now we're talking about eight hundred or how many ever it was that still might have a meter, but it's not registered, they're not using it. So basically, we have subsidized these people. The higher percentage of the lower rates of the population in Chatham, we've paid for people that have not followed the rules. So I think, I understand that now we're talking about, okay, we have to get those people on board, we may have to find them, but that's just for now. That's to start this new program if we in fact follow through on it. But there are years that the local people of Chatham that maybe, I mean, they're not in business, a lot of them are retired, they're not getting bumps in Social Security to make up the difference, but they have subsidized everyone that didn't follow the rules. So I think they need, when you find them, they need to make up for the years and pay more for as long as it takes until we're even, because it's not right the way it has been. It wasn't for, it was not enforced enough. Everybody got letters, everybody got warnings, and yes, I understand it's difficult, you know, to follow through on it, but I don't think it's right that other people in Chatham that are not, you know, in the higher bracket, need to subsidize the people, we don't know what their situations are. That's not the point. They didn't follow the rules, and I for one don't want to pay for three years ago or four years ago. It's just not the way we should be doing business. So that's all I have to say, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Nicole. Brian, did you want to go next?
All right, Brian Phillips, three seventy-four Orleans Road. My first question is about the graph with all the pretty colors on it. Is there any chance you can pull it up? If not, it's not a big deal.
He's gonna pull it up.
Sure. Can you see it, sir?
Okay, so I guess my first question is, why does the information only go back to 2022? I think we need at least to go back twenty years to get any type of real information of cost increases, and it looks like it's all kind of just theoretical, you know, stuff. So although there's a lot of pretty colors, it doesn't look like just that much information on this graph that's usable. My second thing is, and this is, I've heard a lot about this around town, it's why do year-round residents have to pay more during the summertime when, you know, the water usage is driven up by, you know, a lot of like rentals and, you know, summer residents? And then it seems like, you know, if we fix the irrigation issue, we'll get the revenue we need. Mike, I have a question. Projections, do the projections include capital projects? And then I guess to Dean's point, you know, we have invested in, you know, infrastructure to keep costs down, and one of the things that we've, you know, done a good job was keeping, you know, large-scale apartments out, which would drive the cost up a lot. Thanks.
Ari, did you or Rob, did you want to try to answer any points that, I'm not sure I got them all down? I know we tried...
Yes, sir.
Can I just, I'll just interject over that and say that, as I mentioned before, the committee considered requiring the eight hundred approximate number that are registered, we know who they are, but aren't connected with a meter, the full cost per usage that those who are registered are paying, right? And Town Council says we can't do that.
Right, Town Council said we can charge possibly a reasonable amount, which could be fifty to sixty-six percent of that higher rate, but our software, our billing software has no way to charge two separate rates.
Put that aside for a second. We don't know how much of the water goes into their irrigation usage, right?
So for the eight hundred-plus accounts that we track, we know they've used last year about sixty-six million gallons for irrigation alone, out of the town's, you know, four hundred and thirty million total use...
Those are the, those are the ones that are registered but not with a meter?
Those are the ones with a meter that we can track their actual usage just solely for irrigation.
So how did the committee come up with the idea of charging them registered but not metered the same?
Committee wanted to charge them the highest rate, the highest irrigation rate for all usage, and that's where Town Council said that's not reasonable.
For all usage, even the non...
Yeah, correct.
Because we don't know.
There's no way for us to determine which is...
Okay, and now I understand what he's saying. But so, but he did say you could come up with another number.
You could come up with a reasonable amount.
I think he even postulated seventy-five percent.
I think it was sixty-six percent, actually. But we can also charge maybe a surcharge or a fine, which would probably be easier for our software to be able to establish that.
But they can, but you can have scofflaws or don't pay the fine, and then you have to go track them down.
Sure.
Now, you're saying that even if you determine you're gonna charge sixty-six and two-thirds percent of the full rate for these folks, your software doesn't allow it. Can it be done manually?
Anything can be done, you know, with enough resources, sure.
I guess I'm just speaking for myself. We're still in the public hearing stage here. I'm not sure what the board's gonna want to do tonight, but I personally am not in favor of increasing rates for anybody until we deal with those eight hundred people. I mean, sort of same thing as Mrs. Stern was saying, I think Brian was saying, we have to come up with something to deal with it. I'm trying to remember Brian's other questions, but anyway. Okay, anyone else in this audience who has? And I think going back to the online, I thought I saw Elaine Gibbs.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. The first comment, first of all, I have two questions. Are the summer rates two quarters or one quarter? Because this, all these rates are times four.
I think they're two quarters for summer, right?
Two quarters for the summer, two quarters for the winter, and irrigation is only charged during the summer.
Okay, and then if I understand correctly, these are, this is just the base rate, and it doesn't actually include the cost of the water. So that would be on top, is that correct? So in other words, if you use eight percent versus ten percent, you're paying for that, and that's an additional cost that will appear in the bill, the actual water usage.
The service charges are for the meter, but they're also metered charges listed on the chart, and that's for usage.
But those numbers that you showed, is that the maximum per percentage of ten percent usage, or is the water, the cost of the water in addition to those numbers? I'm trying to get a handle on what people can expect with their bills. This is not the be-all, end-all, the water, the actual cost of the water is on top of this, correct?
I'm not sure I'm following.
Yeah, I'm not either. I think Elaine, you want to distinguish between the service charge, which is the base charge for the meter.
Right.
That's fixed, and then there are tiers for the water usage, okay?
Correct, and that would, that's separated, and that hasn't been illustrated here.
I think he did, he did, and we can put that slide back up with the...
Okay, no, that's all right. I just want a clarification on that.
Yeah.
One of the concerns I have is that it's June twenty-fourth, and we're being told now that it should be on the July first. That's a week away. I think that's totally unacceptable. This conversation has been going on for three years. I go back, we can go back to 2018 and talking about people putting in their meters, they had to do it, they had to do it, they haven't. You come up with a number of eight hundred, there's probably fifteen hundred, because many are not listed anywhere. And I think that I agree that we are paying for people who have not followed the rules, and I think that's unacceptable. We know they haven't been following the rules. I would rather put the money into getting a system that you can work with. If you say your system is obsolete, you need to get a better system. We spend a lot on technology, so I don't know why we can't go in there and get the data and go after the people who are abusing it. This is another tax that's outside of the tax rate, because this comes out of our pockets, and there are a lot of those floating around. And I think three percent increase annually for operating expenses seems really high. I don't know why that's necessary, because when you actually come out and say, okay, we're gonna have to build a new well, or we're gonna have to do X, Y, or Z, those all go to town meeting, that's separate, those are capital expenses. So I think the illustration is a little heavy-handed with three percent. If we had known this at town meeting, this has been going on for a long time, if we had been told about these rates before, I think town meeting would have very clearly voted down other spending, knowing that they were gonna have to pay out this kind of money. And that's, that comes to transparency. You know, I know discussions occurred, but they were buried in agendas with fifty items, and people should have known this before town meeting, because I think we would have been more ruthlessly objective on our other spending. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. I just wanted to say two things. I do remember one item that, one other item that Mr. Phillips mentioned, and could you charge a different rate, a higher rate for... and could you charge a different rate, a higher rate for a summer resident, a summer usage, uh, for seasonal residents versus year-round? I suspect Town Council would say you can't do that. Um, I just wanted to mention one other thing. When we did the rates last time, um, and I participated with the Water and Sewer Committee then, and that was the first time we did, we did for the first time, charge a higher rate for irrigation systems. So we, the committee has tried to, and the Select Board endorsed that. We did, we've tried to do that. Um, but there's a lot more that needs to be done. Mr. Hallgren, did you have one other thing you wanted to say? Rob, why don't you comment first?
I just wanted.
Wait a minute, John.
If, if I may just, uh, address Ms. Gibbs' comment. So we do seek approval, um, at town meeting for capital projects, but it's the, it's the rate payers that pay back that debt service. There's no additional expense at town meeting that we're asking for these capital improvements. It's the water rates that pay for these projects and pay for the debt service and get those projects constructed. So that's part of the reason, uh, these rates are necessitated. It's largely driven by debt service for wells 10 and 11, wells 5 and 8.
Elaine, I'll let you respond. I see that you wanted to speak, say something.
No, that's okay. I, I appreciate the clarification. But there are items that do have to come outside. If you're saying that the 3% covers all operating costs, including building the wells, renovating the wells, PFAS and all that, that's one thing. But if this is only for basic operating and it has to go to town meeting for capital expenditures for various water projects, I, I think that it's inappropriate that the people who followed the rules are paying for all of that, and there are probably 1,500 properties out there that are not.
Okay.
And, thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. John?
I just wanted to potentially provide some additional information from what the numbers I computed here. For instance, hypothetically, if you were using 25 gallons per day, every day throughout the year, your increase on this would be basically $54, including the meter charges and the volume charges.
For a quarter?
Basically, no, and, yeah, for, and your change, in other words, your increase in cost for, on a yearly basis, your overall annual cost would be $55 additional compared to the current.
Okay.
If you're using 50 gallons per day hypothetically, it's now up to 60, additional $68 approximately. 75 gallons per day, $81. A hundred gallons per day, $94, rounding these. And if you're using 125 gallons per day, it'd be another 120, uh, 123 dollars per year. Because I couldn't, you know, these, these CCF numbers, I couldn't, I was like, you know, give me a gallons per day. I can relate to that. So I ran the numbers for those, so I just wanted to throw those in.
Okay.
To provide you some.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else have any comment from the public, either online or in person? No, no one on the phone. Okay, I'm gonna close that portion of this public hearing. I'm gonna bring it back to the Select Board for comment, um, questions and, um, thoughts about what the Select Board should do. And I would point out, for those of us, all of us, I think except Stuart, that were on the board back when we raised rates, we went on, uh, we had several sessions of this board. We didn't, we didn't take a vote the first night. We referred it back to the committee at least once, maybe twice. I'm not suggesting we refer this back to the committee, but I personally, um, am not inclined to take a vote on this tonight. Jeff?
Yeah, I just want to get clarity on where we are with respect to the finances and how we're gonna cover our operating costs, both as we near year-end fiscal year '25 and anticipating where we, where we're headed in fiscal year '26. So I would please ask Kerry to, to illuminate and elucidate and explain to us where we are today with respect to the end of the fiscal year and the operating, where we are with an operating deficit. And I, and I want clarity on, I believe we've already transferred $400,000 from the general fund in revenues to cover our operating expenses, and we're still in a projected shortfall of $667,000, is that correct?
Um, so for FY '25, um, yes, uh, it's created a shortfall of $667,286. That's just, um, as of when I ran the numbers, as of this report. Um, so the undesignated fund balance deficit of approximately $170,000 for FY '25.
So when we close out the year for FY '25, we're in a 170,000, call it 171,000.
Deficit.
Deficit in our, and, and.
Yeah.
So we're starting in a year, as if you will, in fiscal, to, as we look forward to fiscal year '26.
Yep.
What we want to do here is we want rates that cover our operating expenses.
Correct.
Including debt service, and, and, and that's what we want to do.
Yes.
So I, I'm.
And so the rates that are projected, that Ari presented to you, cover FY '26 operating and our debt that we currently have on the books.
If we start at 7-1.
If we start at 7-1.
Okay, and does, is that assumption about starting 7-1 include Mr. Hallgren's assumption about, hey, the July utilization will go out at a higher rate? Does it include that assumption? Or would it, would we only start charging these new rates for 7-1 and beyond?
It would only start 7-1 and beyond.
And that's in the assumption that you, that we bring to bear to the analysis for where we're gonna end up fiscal year '26?
Yes, that's.
So I, 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 I know, we, we, we remanded this to the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee some time ago, and they've been working hard at it. And I, we know, we know they've been working hard at it. We asked them for, a long time ago to work on this, and here's their recommendation. So I'm not, I, I'm not, you know, I kind of want to get going. I, I don't want to deepen the deficit going forward. We have a recommendation from our Water and Sewer Advisory Committee that I think is reasonable. It's sensitized to those folks, those residential folks with the 5/8 meters, and, and it, it penalizes those folks with, you know, bigger throughput. So I love that approach. I think it's a very wise approach. And I'm frankly not interested in, in seeing the deficit deepen as we go forward. If we don't do this, well, we're just gonna run ourselves in a deeper hole. We rely on these rates to fund the operating budget for our water system. That's what we all go on. So, and, and I think, and I'm, I'll make a request right now, that we have an agenda item, Dyken's agenda item, that we nail this, this irrigation thing. We gotta nail it. We do have, as some say, 800, some say 1,500, but it's 800 folks that are using, you know, they're, they're getting subsidized by the rest of the folks, that's unacceptable. I totally agree with Nicole Stern, we've been here before, but we need to pay attention and we need to solve it. So we either find these folks, or we, or we sensitize the rates, um, so that they get penalized, because that's just not fair. So those are my thoughts, you guys. I, I think, may not have to be tonight, but boy, I want it to be in the next meeting or the meeting thereafter, because the longer we wait, the deeper the deficit runs. Okay, tho, those are my thoughts.
Well, if you're going to hit the irrigation problem, we're at the beginning of the summer. This is when it's used.
Yeah.
This is when they're, they're, you know, not abiding by the, the rules for this, for this, um, this summer. Uh, and I, I question whether you can just implement the proposed increases without dealing with the irrigation matter at the same time. And I'm not sure that's what you're proposing, but anyway.
I, I'm proposing some alacrity here.
Yeah, I hear you.
Rather than not.
I hear you. Mr. Matters?
Well, no, I mean, again, the irrigation, the numbers, the, it, we have, what, 1,500? We have 1,500 plus reg, you know, 1,500 registered systems. We gotta get a grip on the number of unregistered systems and get those into the, into the mix, because that is lost revenue, plain and simple. We already know that. But what we can control a little bit better is of the 700 that are registered but don't have their second meter, get that second meter. What is actually the big delay in getting that second meter? Because of the 700, I'm, I'm thinking 20% is, 20% has received the second meter, so we have 500 and whatever, 40, whatever the number is, um, people who are registered haven't got their second meter, and once that second meter's in, obviously that comes into the mix of the revenue. So what is that holdup, or where's that coming from?
So we provide the meter to the property owner?
Right.
They have to hire a plumber to install it. And sometimes that's, uh, a larger expense.
But the timetable, I mean, of the, so 80%, 80% of the 700 people who are registered that don't have their second meter yet, what is the timetable for them to install that second meter? Because the longer, this, I mean, I, they could get a plumber, but it could be a year, two years, three years. I mean, the longer they wait, the better off they are.
Well, that's why we'd like to work with Town Council to have some kind of a fine implemented, so it, it starts the clock ticking, and we can start collecting revenue from them not being in compliance.
We really gotta address that element, because that, that's a huge, I don't know what the numbers, what the calculates actually out of, but that's, that's gonna be a huge chunk of this conversation, so. I, I, I'm having, I'm struggling with the fact that essentially we're gonna be penalized, to some degree. We're penalizing those people that have followed the rules, um, by, by taking some action, and, and that.
Well, we're, we're doing that by not taking action too.
Yeah.
We're doing it by not taking action as well.
I know, it is, yes, it's, okay, I'm good.
Ms. Davis?
Well, I'm all in favor of moving forward and mitigating the problem of the irrigation. In our requirements to purchase the irrigation, um, you know, the meter, was it also required to install it? I mean, I would hate to see people go, sure, I'll just buy it and we'll just put it in the basement and not do anything. I mean, did we actually require that, or?
We, we didn't physically provide their meter. They paid for it. And we have those meters available, uh, but just trying to coordinate, uh, installation.
Okay, you're, you have to coordinate installation, or does the homeowner?
The homeowner with their plumber has to coordinate that.
Okay. I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of how Jeff is proposing this, that we need to resolve this and, and really take issue with the irrigation non-compliance issues.
Anyone else? Stuart?
Um, sure. A couple of, maybe, maybe there are follow-up questions. You said we, that Town Council mentioned that they, we couldn't charge seasonal residents a different rate than.
That was just my speculation, Stuart.
Oh, I didn't know, okay.
And I think he was.
Yeah, it had to be fair, it had to be based on, on usage.
On usage?
Right, not, if we couldn't target whether somebody was a, a, a year-round resident or a seasonal resident. We couldn't differentiate between that, because it's the same asset that we'd be using.
Because, I mean, we frequently charge resident and non-resident different rates for whatever the.
Right, but they're all taxpayers, so there's no differentiation.
So did Town Council give a, a specific, um, was there a case law? Was there any?
Yeah, I don't want to.
I'm having trouble with not being able to charge resident and non-resident rates.
I don't think that question's been asked of him, has it?
Well, there.
I haven't heard that.
It's all a homeowner, a property owner is the one, it doesn't matter who's using the water. The, the water is going to a property owner that pays taxes in town. Whether they're a full-time resident or not, they're still taxpayers that are using water as a resource.
Right, but we, but, but in, in other functions, we charge a different rate for residents versus non-residents. So I'm just trying to understand his rationale for, maybe he didn't opine on it, I don't know.
I don't know that he has been asked.
Maybe that's a question.
I think, I think the answer is correct myself, just my legal instinct tells me that. But I, I don't know that the question.
Is it, is it because it's a, it's a utility as opposed to a user fee of some, is, is that his?
I, I don't want to misquote, it was more of a conversation that I had with Town Council. He wasn't citing case law or anything like that, but it was, it was basically since we're delivering water to a property, regardless of who's there. I mean, if it's a renter, or a property owner, or a seasonal resident, it's still, we're providing utility to that property and the, and the usage.
Well, but if you're not, if you don't live here, and you leave for the winter and you pull the meter, you're not, we're not charging you anything.
We shut, we charge a $75 fee to shut the water off to that resident.
Right, but there's no, there's no usage.
Right, it goes, the meter goes to zero.
Well, it, it might be an interesting question for Town Council as to whether we can charge a different fee for a resident versus non-resident, just because we do it everywhere else. Now, this may be different, because it's a public utility, it's a water, that may have a different legal connotation to it. I don't know. Um, but I, I, I agree that it seems to me that, I haven't been here, but I certainly been reading about this, these separate meters for these irrigation systems for years that we have not solved. And it seems to me that that needs to the, if it hasn't been at the front of the list, we need to solve that issue, whether it be a new software program or, but we're seen to be losing a lot of money. So I don't know, is there a timeframe for solving that issue?
I just made it a, I just made it an agenda item, so here we go.
Well.
I, I, I don't think it's been to the forefront, you know? Every time we have this conversation about water and its utilization, this comes up.
Well, there've been a couple of, there've been a couple of steps to address it. One was charging a higher rate for irrigation when we last raised the rates in 2018 or '19. I don't have the date. And I think it was in 2022 when we required the, the meter, uh, for an irrigation system. It was relatively recent.
Well, we required no new irrigation systems for regulations back in 2020.
You can't, you can no longer.
Use town water.
Use town water for irrigation, for a new irrigation system.
Yes.
But that's around the time when we required the meter.
That, yes, that was the time.
Yeah, so we've taken some steps, but more has to be done, and there are two categories here. One is, and we're throwing the number 800, it's probably 760 or something. The folks that are registered but not metered. Those, we know who they are. Then there is an unknown number of people who are not registered, who have irrigation systems. Uh, and tracking those down ought to be the next step after we deal with the first step. So what, what do we want to do tonight? I, I know you've made an agenda item request, and we'll, we'll deal with that.
I have another question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Stuart.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
So on page four, this memo for the water rates that we're chatting about. Jill, it said, number three, it says debt service obligations. This is existing and future debt service associated with recent and upcoming capital improvements must be repaid through water revenues. Is that a self-inflicted rule, or is that some statutory requirement?
I guess I'd have to look back to the decision at town meeting in 1984. So, um, there was action for anything related to drinking water to pay, be paid by the water rates. I, I don't know what the inception date is, but it, this is not, um, this is not unique to Chatham, to have rate payers pay for their services.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't expect you to go back to 1984. But I, I was, it just, when I see words like "must be repaid", does that mean we have to do this through the water rates? Or does that mean it can be paid through the tax base as an?
I suspect the taxpayers could be tapped to pay it. I just think we have historically treated water as a utility, separate and distinct from, from, from a tax, the tax system, because not everybody in town is on, um, town water. We do have some taxpayers who have private wells. It's a very small number, but we have them.
Yeah, it kind of goes back to my questions about the transfer station fees. I'm trying to ascertain as to what the, what, what is the policy here as to, what are we trying to do with these fees? This one at least led to me to believe that we, we had a policy somewhere that said, "Must be repaid", but I didn't know if that meant we can't use the tax base?
I suspect, I don't know if you want to answer it, but I suspect you could.
Because I don't know how you're gonna make up the 170,000, say we didn't.
Well, the only way to make it up is to implement these rates. Is that right? Because if, if we voted these in, as you, as has been proposed tonight, that 170,000 would be accounted for, would be paid off, right? We wouldn't, we wouldn't enter the FY '26 with a deficit of 170,000.
We would still enter FY '26 with a deficit until we receive, start receiving funds to cover it.
But the rates, the, the funds would be sufficient to cover it.
Yeah, once we get the funds.
Yes.
Yeah, the.
And, and just to clarify, so the, let's say we voted in tonight. Uh, when do your first bills go out? That reflect the new rates?
Beginning of July.
And those will cover the new rates? The, 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 the usage that will be impacted by the new rates is usage that starts July 1? It wouldn't include June?
No, it includes June, so it's, uh, it's a three-month quarter, but we read July's bills are read the month before, so it would be water that's already been used at this point.
Would be charged at a higher rate, so it's some retroactivity for a month.
Correct.
Okay.
So, so I was just.
Go ahead, Stuart.
As we, I'm kind of getting to Jeff's concern here. If we run a deficit of 170,000 or whatever, how does that get repaid? Is it through?
Only if we, unless you take taxpayer money.
Well, that's what I'm, that's my question.
Yeah. But unless you take taxpayer money, the way it gets repaid is, as Kerry just said, once the rates go into effect and people start paying their bills, that 170,000 will be, would be covered.
So we've never used, we've never used taxpayer money, property tax money for the water?
It's been separately funded out of, it's been self-serving.
Yeah.
It's always started in the talk.
Self-supported.
Okay.
As though we're a private water company.
Right. And that's by history as opposed to.
And I think choice of the town, whether we ever. And I think choice of the town, whether we ever formally did that, I don't know.
Because I, I think it's, you know, not for tonight, but it might be an interesting question as to, is really, you know, historically, we've tried to pay for functions through fees, at least certain functions, water, one of them, you know, pick another one, whatever, whatever we charge, parking rack, I don't know. But, you know, our situation here has changed dramatically in the last 40 years and, you know, since two and a half or whatever it's been, and I, I wonder whether we have to rethink, if we're trying to keep people living here in Chatham, is this the best way to continue to charge people or is it better to go to the, to the tax rate? And, and I'm not arguing either way, other than we may want to have that discussion.
I think you could have that discussion if we get to the point over time where we start having, we have to continue to build large filtration plants at, at seven, 10 million dollars a week.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we might want to take a look at that, but that would be my.
Yeah, I look at each one of these questions.
Three people who want to, are, are, when you're finished?
Well, my, I'll, in closing, I'm just going to, when we, at least when I look at these different subjects that come up over the select board, and I think probably you folks do, I always look at it from the perspective, how are we going to retain people to live in this community? And, you know, that's a, that's a big issue, and people are leaving here in droves, and I don't, you know, we have to somehow control these, or at least rethink how we fund these types of things. Just because we've done it historically this way, we, maybe we got to rethink that. Thank you.
Okay, Corey, you first, then Shereen, then Jeff.
Okay, going back to Jeff's, you know, I, I agree, we need to kind of move this along a little bit, I'm reluctant on, just, I'm, I'm a little reluctant to do the, the rate changes as proposed, and my question is, these are, these are not just arbitrary numbers, they're data-driven, you know, so to address the deficit that we're looking at, is there a percent, is there an adjustment that could be made to these proposed rates tonight that would address the next year's kind of operating deficits and making sure we're good for the next year, that would give us the ability to then work on the irrigation issue? And then, once we kind of collect that over the next year, next year, do another adjustment, but we can change rates in a year, every year. My question, my question is, can we do a, a smaller rate increase right now, tonight, you know, in, based on some kind of factual data or suggestions that could address us moving forward with this, but not doing the full-scale push and allow us some time to tackle the irrigation? The irrigation's a big piece of this.
You're talking about a phased in approach?
A phased one, yes, I am.
Okay. Shereen, did you have something?
No, I'm interested in hearing the answer to that question, yeah.
Okay, anybody want to?
Ari, he might be able to, he's got his hand.
Ari, do you want to respond to that question possibly?
So Corey, you bring up a great point, I think because of how sensitive the irrigation issue can be and you want to be careful about these decisions, you could perhaps even try to phase in the increases for the meter charges that I was showing you earlier, everything else besides the irrigation service charges, and maybe consider having some type of irrigation charge starting in October, that's a potential strategy. Well, you can have more being discussed about it, so you can separate the two, at least it brings enough revenue coming in. I have to run through the numbers and check exactly how much, if it will be enough, how much revenue you'll gain this summer, be enough to keep us afloat or it is in the surplus and above zero, but it could be part of a two-phase plan where you increase the rates for the service charge, the meter charges for the regular use and then irrigation perhaps in October.
The problem with that, though, is you're not going to capture the irrigation uses this summer, which is when people are irrigating.
Yeah, I mean, I'm less interested in pushing up the irrigation, is I think that is the biggest, I mean, you know, that's our focal point right now, so I'm, I'm looking to wondering if we're phasing this on the regular usage, I guess that's what I'm looking at, and not pushing up the irrigation, that's kind of the opposite concept of what I'm looking at. And I think we should, I think if we're going to move forward, we got to capture irrigation right now.
What would happen, I would imagine, if you phased it in, is we're going to have an ongoing deficit.
Yeah, so I had Ari work with me to see if we adjusted our rates as of October 1st and for, if, with the rates as of right now for FY '24, and with the new proposed rates for FY '26, if we did them in October versus July, we would lose $600,000 for our FY '26 budget. I don't know how much the difference would be if we just started irrigation now and not the regular rates.
Well, I think what, if I understand what Mr. Metters is suggesting, and I'll just throw a number out, suppose instead of increasing these according to the proposal, you increased the usage 50% less.
Mm-hmm.
We, you know, we would, we would, we would lose some money, I mean, we'd.
Yep.
You know, and the question is, what, does the, does the board want to do that?
I guess, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, these, these proposed increases are kind of been proposed for a longer span outward, and right now, I just want to address the next year, just try to get us through a, a point where we can raise them a little bit to address some, you know, the deficit that we want to avoid desperately or, you know, a longer-term deficit, but able to give us some time to tackle some of the bigger issues so we can properly adjust them a year from now in a more balanced manner. That's, I guess that's what I'm trying to ask.
Shereen?
So if we're, if we phase it, as Corey's proposing, we're still going to lose money.
Mm-hmm.
But if we just go with the plan and then review it in a year, would that be a better way to do it, just so that we're keeping ourselves above water?
So.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, we've discussed raising the rates now and each January reviewing the rates every year going forward. The graph shows an increase of 3%, but it doesn't necessarily have to be 3%, and that's why he just put it in there for an example to use, but we definitely want to review the rates every year going forward, so we might not necessarily have to raise the rates in FY '27, especially if our debt starts declining too, so.
Mr. Deikens? Does that answer your question, Shereen?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yeah, I, I feel pretty strongly that we, we approve these rates this evening, otherwise we're going to dig ourselves a hole, I don't want to do that, I just want to respond to Stuart's comments about, we've treated water as a commodity and we've charged for the use of that commodity and, and if folks, whether they're a winter, summer, seasonal resident and non-resident, it's based totally on their utilization. Now, that is the most equitable way that I, I can imagine that we would charge for a commodity that we've all invested in, but we've invested specifically in the water infrastructure by taking on debt and part of this need for the increase is frankly exacerbated by our investment, our recent investment in Wells 5 and 8 and the purification plant there, that's absolutely requisite, and in our wanting to do, to get 10 and 11 back online. So, we've incurred debt costs and, and in our infrastructure that we need to pay for. Now, we've never not paid for those costs through, through the water rate, that's what, that's who, that's who we've paid for. So if we don't, if we don't approve the rate increases, we're going to run a deficit, and then we're going to figure out how we're going to cover the deficit going forward. So, I, I would argue this evening that we approve these rates, they have been vetted, I think, and then another point, they've sensitized the, the folks that have the 5/8 meters, and that's the vast majority of the town, those rate increases aren't that exorbitant, they really aren't onerous. Where they're more onerous is with the larger utilizers, the one-inchers and the folks that have bigger tubes going into their businesses frankly, and, and those are the folks that ought to be paying a higher rate and, and ever sent, highly more sensitized higher rate. So, I, I'm, these guys have done a good job here along with Waterworth, and, and I'm willing to move it, maybe to my detriment, but I'm willing to move it this evening.
If you would just hold up the motion, I wanted to, have you, are you done?
Uh, yeah, I'm done.
I wanted to ask you a question. I wanted to ask you a question. So, would you favor moving them tonight without dealing with the irrigation thing?
No, I, I would make, I would make a, I've already put, placed the irrigation as an agenda item.
I'm talking about doing something tonight on.
Yeah, 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 otherwise we're just going to.
That's the only way, you know, I.
So I.
It's the only way I could support something tonight.
Some other expert needs to tell me what to do then.
I don't want these, I don't want these 800 people continuing to be subsidized by, by, by the, by the other ratepayers this summer.
Okay, then let's, let's.
That's how I feel.
Okay, then let's have a, an expert propose that they get fined somehow or, you know, let's, exact a fine, if we know folks that, that are scofflaws, let's whack them.
I want a higher rate.
Okay.
That's what I want.
Okay, well.
You know what I'd like?
Yeah.
More than a week's notice. I, I, I think, you know, I feel like I have a gun to my head, if you don't do this, the roof is going to cave in, and I, I don't know how we got here, where we, where we're, where we're trying to make a decision, which is going to have a, you know, a pretty significant effect on the citizenry with a, with a week's notice. I mean, I'm kind of going back to John's argument, I think it's, it's a reasonable, and Mr. Phillips' argument, you know, it seems to be a reasonable argument, it's a week's notice, I think that that's, you know, disappointing.
Jeff?
It's a week's notice with also a lot of homework, and there's been a lot of thought put into the, put into the recommendations, water insurers had this for months and they've worked hard on it for months, so that's one of the reasons why I'm willing to, to vote in favor of their implementation, because our subcommittee, which we entrusted with doing this stuff, made a decent recommendation, or a thoughtful recommendation, that's all.
Stuart?
So, sorry, but if, I don't know if this is for Jill, or if we don't approve the rate increases tonight, just looking at worst case, and we go into this deficit considerable, how are we going to fund that? Forget, let's say rates are off the table, is that a, is that a tax, a, a tax base or is that a free cash? What, what is that?
So, the deficit that we'll incur for the end of FY '25 will hit what we have for available free cash from the general fund, and then going forward, if we don't increase the rates, it will always affect the def, you know, the deficit will always affect free cash. But once we get the rates increased, it, there's nothing else you can do unless you raise it on the recap.
No, eh, eh, thank you, that answered my question, and, I mean, eventually, I think whether it's tonight or whenever, we're going to get to rate increases, I just thought, I think it needs to be more than a week's notice, thank you.
If you don't, if you continue to run a deficit in the water account, does that affect our bond ratings or our future bond ratings?
It does, so that's one thing that our financial advisors ask every year, they ask about our water and our sewer rates if we've had increases, and also our standard imports also talks, asks us about water and sewer as well, and rate increases, and if we're covering our debt and stuff like that, so it's.
Rob, if, if the board were to vote tonight to implement the proposal, could we also implement it, could we include in that a 67% or whatever you want to call it, 60% usage charge for the 800? Do we feel legally sound on that or do we have to push that further?
Town council said we would need to basically evaluate and see what the overall irrigation usage is in town versus household usage, come up with that percentage, possibly inflate it slightly, but.
We haven't done that yet.
We haven't done that yet.
How long would that take to do?
I don't want to say, but maybe, you know, a couple of weeks.
And if we, if you were to come back to us on July 8th or July 17th, when, 22nd, and say, oh, it's, we can charge 50%, that's 50% of what? That would mean that all the usage of that house, irrigation or otherwise, is going to be 50% higher than they're currently, than they would pay as a pure residential.
It would, would mean we take all of their usage, take 50% of it and charge that the highest irrigation usage.
Okay, and suppose you come back in, on, on July 22nd or whenever, and, and that's after the rates have been voted to go into effect July 1, how does that get implemented in the rates, in terms of actual billing and receiving of funds?
It probably wouldn't go into effect until the second, the next quarter in, in.
Which is October.
October, yeah. Because the, the July rates, the July bills are poised and ready to go out.
Well, tell me about the fines, how much do we?
That's, it's a great question, we rely on the select board to come up with something that's reasonable.
Are there fines now in place, are there penalties in place?
Yeah, there are, I think at first is a warning, and then the first, second instance is $100, then it goes up to $200.
Yeah.
But that's, but that's something in place, if the select board were to vote on something other than that, we can implement that.
We have to have a hearing?
Do another hearing, yes.
Excuse me, the fines, why isn't it $300? Isn't that the maximum that you can find under a statute? And wouldn't it be, wouldn't, couldn't it be $150, pick the number, up to $300 per day?
I believe it's per, I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure on the details, I believe it's per week.
Okay, maybe it's written per week, that's, if it's not written, it's typically per day, but, so those fines could add up considerably if.
Problem with fines is a lot of people are just not going to pay them, or they're going to, or they're going to say, eh, it isn't that much, I just like people paying $50 for a parking ticket.
Well, they're not going to want to go to Orleans District Court either to fight the fine.
Yeah, but it's, it's a lot of work to, to enforce them, a lot of staff time and so forth to do it, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, well, we did it, it wasn't, it's a form, you fill it out and.
And if we're going to make changes in fines, we're not going to be able to do that tonight, so.
No, I understand.
Before, I think you wanted to offer a motion before you do that, I do see, I did, I did complete taking public comment, but Ms. Stern, I'll give you a chance to say something, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you again, I'm, I'm listening very intently, and I'm trying to put myself in the position of one of those people that have not followed the rules, and they must be sitting, if they're watching, thinking, oh, we got them again. So, if you vote for this tonight, then everything that we've paid for for five years, we're eating it, maybe we have other things we could have used that money for. And, and honestly, you talk about revenue, why can't you take that 600,000, if that's what it is, divide it between 800 or 1,500, whatever you want to do, that's their fine, and if you, if you're concerned about collecting it, add it to their taxes, whatever it is, they need to be accountable, and they're not being accountable, and it's not setting a good example for everybody else that's in Chatham. And I will say this, this is so upsetting to me, I will go out and borrow money to dig a well so that I don't have to be involved in it, because it's just not equitable, it's not fair, it's not what Chatham should be. They need to be accountable for the last five years, and yes, if you get them there, then they will participate now, someone needs to pay, it shouldn't be the people that have been paying all along.
Okay.
Again, thank you very much for letting me have my say.
Thank you, Ms. Stern.
Thank you.
Back to the board, Jeff, did you want to offer a motion?
I'm going to approve of the rates as recommended by the Water and Sewer Advisory Committee.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? I'm, I'm just going to say, offer this comment, I think the rates have to go into effect because I'm concerned about running a deficit in the water account and starting the year with in deficit, but I'm very troubled about the irrigation problem, as we've said, and it looks like whether we use fines or whether we use a higher rate for them, and how you calculate the fines, it's going to take some time and we're not going to reach these people this summer, and maybe we can reach them with fines this summer, we'll have to have a public hearing, I suppose the soonest we could have one is perhaps the 22nd of July, we can vote fine, we, we could have a public hearing and vote fines that same night?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think the, I don't know if Ms. Stern's suggestion about how, how much to fine these people is correct, but it's, it's certainly something, you know, think about. So, after hearing all the conversation, I, I'm going to vote to support it, I, I attended pretty much, I think, every meeting of the. I think, every meeting of the Water and Sewer Committee, or almost every meeting. I'm the liaison, and they have wrestled with this for a year, perhaps. And it isn't as though, those are public meetings. Anybody could've, could've spoken at them. It's a tough, tough call. We're trying to be equitable. I think we're all distressed about scofflaws, and some people may not be scofflaws. Maybe they can't get a plumber. But I'm gonna support the motion, reluctantly, but I'm gonna support it. So, any more discussion? I'll call the vote. Mr. Da, Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
No.
And the chair votes aye. So it is, it is approved. We will end this item and go on to the next.
Thank you.
Next public hearing, construction permit fee increases, and our building inspector, Mr. Jay Briggs, welcome.
Jay Briggs, Building Commissioner. Thanks for having me here tonight to present the construction permit fee schedule for your consideration. Back in 2024, around time of town meeting, it was suggested that, by the select board, some members of the select board and Finance Committee, that we take a look at potentially raising permit fees. Our last increase was in two thousand and eight.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I, before you complete your work, this is a public hearing also, and I'm gonna ask our clerk. Thank you, Stuart, for.
It's my one job. I don't wanna lose it yet.
No, I know. You're doing a great job at it too, so please read the public hearing notice.
Thank you. Town of Chatham Select Board Public Hearing Notice. Notice is hereby given that the Chatham Select Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, at five PM, in the large meeting room at the Town Hall Annex, two sixty-one George Ryder Road, to consider increases to the current list of Town of Chatham construction permit fees for the following categories. You want me to read all those categories?
Yeah, I guess you should.
Okay. Building permit fees, residential, commercial, other related building permit fees, work started without a permit, underestimation of a work permit, of work on a permit, outside plan review cost, shed regulation, unusual situation fee calculation, plumbing and gas permit fees, single fixture, residential and commercial, multiple fixtures, residential and commercial, excuse me, electrical permit fees, residential, emergency callouts. All parties, all interested parties are encouraged to participate in person or remotely via the link on the posted agenda.
Thank you. Sir Jay, please continue. Sorry.
Take two. Jay Briggs, Building Commissioner. Thank you for having me here this evening. You've had a busy night already. So, we're presenting a proposed construction permit fee schedule for your consideration tonight. It was suggested we take a look at this back in 2024 by members of the Select Board and the Finance Committee, whereas the last time we had a, an increase was two thousand and eight. We started looking at fees for other Cape towns, and there's quite a wide variety of how people assess fees. Some go by square foot, some go by cost of construction. They break the building components down into a wide variety of items. But our overall fee that we've come up with tonight is in keeping with surrounding towns. One of our current ways to do it, we have a permit review fee when the permit is submitted, seventy-five dollars, and that gets discounted from the actual permit fee at the end of the process. And one of the big changes that we're proposing would be to have that separate from the permit fee itself, and have that in addition to. So for a residential permit, that runs seventy-five dollars currently. And just that change alone, we looked at 2024, for an example, we know the number of permits. That would bring an additional seventy-six thousand dollars in building permit fees. In addition to the fix, that, we have also fixed permit fees, which are express permits, most commonly roofing, siding, windows and doors. It was, I think, the intent in two thousand and eight to charge for those individually. So if someone was doing multiple categories, they'd get charged the minimum fee for each one of those categories. But somehow, the, the procedure that's been followed is, if they're doing all three, they get charged for one express permit. And I don't think that was the intent, and I would like to clarify that and separate that the way I believe it was intended to be done back in two thousand and eight. Other fixed permit fees, I would like to put in under a fixed permit fee rather than square footage, would be the relocated buildings, pools, tennis courts, rooftop and ground mount solar arrays, sheds not requiring a building permit, fire sprinkler alarms, temporary storage structures, exterior mechanical system appliances, temporary tents. Temporary tents is a big one. We had some formula in the past, but the minimum fees, all it's ever been charged, it's two hundred dollar tent fee. And I think that, especially if some of these bigger events, they have multiple tents, so I think they should be charged per tent. I'm jumping ahead of myself here a little bit. I'll bring that back up when I get to the actual charts.
Yes.
Jay, just, when, when somebody's permitting for a tent, like, what size tent? I mean, it's.
Well, if it's under four hundred square feet, it doesn't even require a permit.
Okay.
A residential tent. But I mean, most of the tents that we permit, and I think we did sixty-six in 2024, they're sizable tents. They're big function tents.
Okay, thank you.
So, the, back to the regular building permits, where we, where we, they're not fixed fee permits. I was taking out the plan review fee, as I had mentioned, and then I was going to increase the square foot pricing ten cents a square foot across the board. And if you look at the table that's up on the screen, you also have it in your packet, you can see that for a one and two family dwelling, it's ninety cents a square foot, they'll go up ten cents a square foot to a dollar a square foot. Ten cents across the board, with the exception of docks and piers, which went up thirty cents a square foot. Other, other fees, work started without a permit, is currently discouraged by doubling the permit fee. And I had originally, when I proposed this, proposed quadrupling the fee, as I had spoken to other building commissioners around town. But in, in hearing from Town Council, he doesn't support that. And he says, although other towns do do double or triple permit fees for people who violate and start work without a permit, he did refer me to the fact that Mass General Law allows for us to fine people as well. I am not a believer in fines, like, I try not to use fines. It's always a threat to fine someone to get compliance, but we seem to manage to get compliance in other ways without going the fining route. But we can find up to a thousand dollars per day, if need be. If the value, valuation of work, Massachusetts makes us verify the cost of construction. And a lot of times, contractors or homeowners will just put in a very low number. I think, I don't know if they think that that's how we charge for the permit fee, but the state of Massachusetts makes me verify that number, make sure it's a reasonable number. So, I do adjust fees. I do have conversations with contractors if they do submit low numbers. Not everyone does it. There's a few that do. And that's just for documentation of the permit, the work that's going on in town. If outside plan review is deemed necessary by myself, the cost should be paid by the applicant. That's something that's still in, that was on the fee schedule from two thousand and eight. I'm not proposing to change that. Sheds under a hundred and twenty square feet, if they're commercial, and two hundred square feet, if they're residential, don't require a building permit. But they do require a shed registration to ensure zoning compliance. So we're basically just making sure that they meet building coverage and setbacks. Staff is retaining the optional fee calculation method of ten dollars per thousand estimated cost at the discretion of the Building Commissioner for unusual situations. And I've had big builders in town say, I don't wanna pay the square foot price on this house. It's a pretty big house. Let me pay the ten dollars per thousand of construction, until I did the math, and they found that it was gonna be three times more expensive to go that route. So, we haven't implemented that. We have that. It may, it probably should have been implemented in the past for large solar arrays, but was not. But I'm trying to get all the fees from two thousand and eight on a level playing field, in accordance with some of the other towns. Solar is a big one, that, other towns break up in a wide variety based on the number of kilowatt hours generated or megawatt hours. It's convoluted, so I, I think I've streamlined it to make sense for us. And again, if we have a very large project, we could always go to the ten dollars per thousand of estimated cost. Plumbing and gas permit fees. And I hear probably more from, from plumbers than anyone else how low Chatham's permit fees are. And that's from the inspector also. He says the same thing. But currently, thirty dollars is our base permit fee for plumbing permit. That includes one fixture. Unlike electrical, the plumbing and gas permits are a base fee plus a fixed number for, it's ten dollars currently for each fixture. The average plumbing or gas permit that comes in is for six fixtures. So I ran six figure, six fixture scenario, so you could see the difference, what I'm proposing. Going from thirty dollar base fee to a sixty dollar base fee, and instead of ten dollars a fixture, going to twelve dollars a fixture. So currently, a six fixture permit for plumbing and gas would be eighty dollars. And under the new scenario, it would be a hundred and twenty. And this represents a forty dollar increase. And since two thousand and eight, I don't think that that's a, a huge undertaking. Things have gone up a lot more than that. And if you're looking at what, you know, the plumbing and gas inspector has to go out usually at least two, on two inspections per permit, rough and a final, and sometimes he has to do additional inspections as well. He gets thirty-five dollars per inspection, so his minimum would be a seventy dollar fee to the town. So if we're doing a one fixture permit now, the town's losing forty dollars on that. There aren't a lot of one fixture, but there are some one fixture permits pulled. Under the new plan, it would be sixty dollars. We'd still be losing money, but we'd be only losing ten dollars rather than losing forty dollars. The commercial fee structure consists of a base fee plus a per fixture fee as well. Currently, the base fee is seventy-five dollars, and the fixture fee is twelve dollars. I was proposing on raising that to a hundred dollar base fee with fifteen dollars per fixture. Now to my favorite part, the electric permit fees. It's very straightforward. The electric permit fees are per inspection only. So the current electric permit is fifty dollars per inspection. A lot of times, the contractor will say, I'm gonna need three inspections on this job. He'll write a check for a hundred and fifty dollars. And a lot of times, we have to remind them, if they're requesting additional inspections, that they've only paid for whatever the number is. We're pretty good at keeping track on that. But I'm proposing to increase that fee by fifteen dollars. So if you look at the increases that I've gone over for building, plumbing, gas, and electric, electric with the new, under the new scenario, and this is based on 2024 numbers for permits that we have, would generate another nineteen thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. Plumbing and gas would be sixty-six thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, and building permits would be a hundred and forty-four thousand one eighty-three. And we're proposing to have this go into effect, if, if you so choose, on October first.
I, I just had a couple of questions. Have you, in preparing these increases, taken into account the cost of staff time? Are the, are the bottom line amounts reasonably related to the cost to the town of staff time, to justify the?
I think Katie would probably be better at answering that.
Katie, could you?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Katie Donovan, Director of Community Development. Certainly from the plumbing, for the plumbing inspector and the electrical inspector, the increases are certainly justified to cover the costs per inspection. Certain, and then, when you look at the costs of building permit fees being increased from two thousand and eight, if, we've certainly had increases in salary for our two, for our building inspector and our building commissioner, for our administrative staff. Just the cost of doing business has gone up since two thousand and eight, and so we feel that the costs are relative and justified.
Have we had to hire more staff since two thousand and eight? I would expect we've done that?
We have not hired new staff since two thousand and eight. However, one of our administrative staff went from a part-time position to a full-time position. And we are, if you'll recall, in this year's budget, proposing to hire another building inspector. And this will help to also cover some of those costs.
Thank you. I just wanted to establish for the record that these are not arbitrary numbers that we're throwing out. How do they compare, how do, how do the bottom line numbers compare with other surrounding towns? Just generally, I don't need to know a lot of particulars.
We tried to get them right in, in line with other towns. I mean, there are some outliers, like P-Town, it's very expensive to pull, pull permits for. But we're trying to be in line with other surrounding towns.
Have you had any feedback from the building community, the plumbers or the electricians who might have, might be aware that we're doing this, considering this?
No, I haven't. I mean, nobody likes to see any fees go up, but plumbers are making two hundred dollars an hour now, so.
It's all gonna be on the property, it'll be on the property owner anyway.
Everything has gone up since two thousand and eight, and this, I think, is fairly modest and in line with other surrounding towns.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Any, I'm sorry, Stuart, go ahead.
It's kinda similar to other questions I've had, but, and you may have covered it, Jay, I apologize if you had. The, the total revenue that you folks collect for your inspectional services, let's say, with the fee increases, that will pay for all of the salaries and what have you for the, for that?
I don't think, even with the increase, it'll cover everything.
It won't.
I don't believe so. The, based on that 2024 scenario, the total of all those categories is two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, just over two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
The, the.
Somewhat conservative, but still.
Okay, that, that's the, that's the total.
Increase.
Yeah, increase. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Any comments from the public in the audience here, or online? I don't see anyone.
No one has their hand raised.
And no one on the phone. Okay. Take it back to the board. Do I have a motion to approve this fee request?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, I'll take a vote. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, so they are approved, and the public hearing is closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we will go on to a public comments on the business agenda. And as I said earlier, the Lighthouse Beach item, which is six, I'm sorry, four C, and, and the one twenty-seven Old Harbor Road Ellis property, which is four G. I will entertain contemporaneous public comment when those items come up. Is there any public comment in the audience, in person or online? I don't see anyone with a hand up. So, we'll go on to the business agenda. The first item is, is going to be related to the sixty-fifth anniversary of the Railroad Museum. And then we have three requests to enter, for licenses to enter and use town property. We have the Lighthouse Beach Operation Plan for 2025, approval of financing agreement for the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, approval of the Adult Supportive Day Care Program in Orleans, update on the Community Services Behavioral Health Clinical Program, a review of RFP Design Guidelines and Scope of Work for the Ellis Property. and Scope of Work for the Ellis Property on 127 Old Harbor Road, and we have a series of committee appointments and reappointments, and the town managers report. So the very first business item of the evening, we put you on first, but after several delays here. I, I see at the podium Liz McCart and Gil Sparks, who are going to talk about honoring the 65th anniversary of the Chatham Railroad Museum with a public proclamation.
And we will be very, very quick. Basically, we're, we're asking the select board to approve our selection of July 12th with a rain date of July 19th as the 65th anniversary of the opening of the Railroad Museum. And we intend for the benefit of all residents of town and visitors to celebrate that. And this resolution will help popularize that and make it, make it official. And just to give a quick rundown of what we're going to do, these are extra things beyond everything we do five days a week in the summer. We're going to have an O-gauge railroad running inside. We're going to have a G-gauge railroad running outside. We are going to have beanbag toss, crafts, and a scavenger hunt with kids' prizes. We are going to have continual running railroad videos. And above all, we're going to have free cupcakes. And we encourage all of you on the select board who have children or grandchildren who might fit into this, or anybody who would like to just help us celebrate, to come join with us. And this is part of our continuing effort to reach out largely to the, to the permanent community, but also to our visitors, and to make the Railroad Museum not just a passive place for people to enjoy, but an active member of the community. And we appreciate the support we've gotten from the town and the select board in keeping our property, which I think right now is as beautiful as it has ever been. So I'm not going to read this resolution. I think you all have it in front of you.
Someone should read it. Someone should read it.
I will read.
If you'd like to read it, or we can read it, whatever you'd like.
I will read it. I will read it.
Should we do a motion first and then?
Yeah, before, before we do that, we'll, we'll, we'll take a motion. But I just want to point out, it's July 12th. That's a Saturday.
Saturday from 1 to 4.
From 1 to 4. Okay.
I'll do, I move to proclaim July 12, 2025 with a rain date of July 19, 2025, as the official celebration date of the 65th anniversary of the Chatham Railroad Museum.
Second. There's a second. Any discussion? All right, I'll, I'll take a vote. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So we have proclaimed it. Do you, would you like to read the resolution?
I will read the resolution. Whereas the Chatham Railroad Station opened on November 21, 1887, and for many years served over 20,000 passengers each year as part of a vital link to Harwich, Boston, and beyond. And whereas the Chatham Railroad operated for 50 years and through the movement of freight and passengers, was instrumental in the development and economy of Chatham. And whereas subsequent to the closure of the railroad in 1937, the station was purchased by Phyllis Cox, who donated it to the town of Chatham in 1951. And whereas the select board determined to create a railroad museum in the station building, which museum opened in 1960 as the Chatham Railroad Museum. And whereas the Chatham Railroad Museum has been maintained by the town of Chatham and operated for 65 years by a succession of dedicated volunteers, was included in the National Register of Historic Places in 1978, and currently attracts approximately 6,000 visitors per year. And I would add approximately $6,000 in donations a year. And we have a surplus in your accounting system. So now therefore, this is sort of funny, but I, Jill Goldsmith, town manager of the town of Chatham, along with the select board, do hereby proclaim July 12, 2025 with a rain date of July 19, 2025, as the date designated to celebrate the 65th anniversary of the Chatham Railroad Museum, and call upon our residents and visitors to recognize and participate in this special observance as detailed in the museum's website, which is www.chathamrailroadmuseum.com. By the way, a very good website if all of you would take a look at it.
I would just, thank you. I would just point out, the version you have has been adjusted a bit. The, the, it's the proclaiming party is the select board. So we've, we've corrected that. We'll include both.
Yeah, thank you.
The town manager. Signed by both.
Happens all the time. So we had updated.
Thank you. And I, as liaison to the, this is one of my really fun liaison roles. I, I, I get one free lunch from them. I've been liaison to the Historical Commission for 10 years, but Messina has never once given me a free lunch. But, but I, I really know the work that you, under your leadership, both of you, that you, that you've done for that museum. And it's just wonderful. And I'm happy that the town has supported you. And I would also point out is this Thursday, the 26th, at the Eldridge Public Library.
Yes.
You and Amy Andreasen, the library director, are giving a talk on Marcellus Eldridge, who?
We are. And I, I know what my part was, but listening through Amy's rehearsal, I learned stuff about the Eldridge family that I had never known. And I would encourage all of you to try to make it. It's free. It's at 5:00 PM at the library. And even long-term residents will know more about the town of Chatham if they come in.
And I should point out, that's on top of the 4 o'clock at the RCA McConie, which Mr. Dykens is going to attend and give town remarks. That's, there's a ribbon cutting there. That's why it's a special day for the town. Thank you both.
Thank you.
I would like to just thank you for your support. And Gil and I are just privileged, and all our volunteers are privileged to carry a, this town legacy. This, it's a little town gem. So we are privileged to be volunteers at the museum. So thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Next item is to consider the license to enter and use real town property. There are three items. The first one is the Chatham Community Center law, Chatham Community Center, it says law. What is it? What is?
Lawn.
Lawn. And Harding's Beach Boot Camp Chatham, Mary Austin. Is Mary Austin here or online? I think she's online.
Yes, I am online. I'm actually traveling. Can you hear me?
Yes, absolutely.
Great. Thanks for having me.
Just tell us a little bit about what, what you are doing. It looks like you've been doing this for a while and you're just getting additional approval. There's a, now there's a form of license that you're being asked to sign.
Yes. Yes. I've always worked through the community center, through Susan Mavio, and before that through Georgia. So this is my 15th summer. I'm teaching the classes. And the first class is scheduled to start hopefully June 30th, and then the end date would be August 11th.
Okay.
So there are four classes each week, three at the community center and one at Harding's Beach. It's a group exercise class. I have all of my own equipment. I have an insurance policy that I carry. And it's a, a group exercise class that meets for an hour before the rec program at the community center, and then before the beaches start charging for parking at Harding's Beach.
Okay. Thank you. Before I entertain a motion, I would just note that the license, this is internal to us, says that it is by and between the town acting by and through its select board, but it has the signature of the town manager. So if we should adjust that, it should either say, it should be signed, I think it should be signed by the town manager, maybe acting by and through the town manager, and we approve the license. I think that's also the case with the one coming up. So is there a motion to approve this?
I move to authorize the town manager to grant a license to enter and use real town property to Mary Austin for use of the community center field on Monday, Wednesday, and Saturday from 7:15 AM and to 9:00 AM, and on Harding's Beach on Fridays from 7:15 AM to 9:00 AM, from June 28th through August 13, 2025, for boot camp fitness classes.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll take a roll call. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
The chair says aye. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mary. Next is?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Chatham Community Center Aerobics Room, Circuit Training Fitness Classes, Rachel Cook. Is Ms. Cook on or here? We emailed. Don't see anyone. Are we required? Is this one of this, one of these cases where we have to have the person present? We, was that just with liquor?
If I might say that this is, has been a class conducted for multiple years. We've approved it before. It's just a licensing agreement we've never had in front of us before. So I would suggest that we're, we're fine approving this this evening.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Dean, I move to authorize the town manager to grant a license to enter and use real town property to Rachel Cook for the use of the community center aerobics room at 702 Main Street Chatham on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9:30 AM to 10:30 AM, and Saturday 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, for a circuit training class.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Call the, call the roll. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. I think I heard everybody. Okay. The last one is Chatham Community Center Aerobics Room, Adult Fitness Class, Susan Hunter. Susan Hunter on?
Susan's in the room.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
I've been at the community center since 2021 with a handful of ladies who needed a place to work out. After where they worked out, the place closed during COVID and never opened again. So we did some backyard workouts. We did some Zoom, and then stuff opened, and we landed in the community center. The ladies suggested it. They said it was there for the community. So I went. The director had retired, so she wasn't there. I got the paperwork. I met with Dan Tobin. We agreed on the time and the price. I had a set fee, a flat fee. I've never paid a percentage. And the flat fee was capped. So off we went, and four years, $12 a class, never raised the price, and here I am.
So the, the current arrangement calls for the license fee of 10% of the revenue collected. Is that a problem for you, or?
Well, right now, everything is held till January. If I were to pay, I grew to average 20 people, it quadruples. I've been paying 150. So if we all do the math, it's a lot of money, you know, and it's three days a week. So I have an issue with that, but it is what it is. I wasn't aware anything was changing, so.
And it goes up to 20% on the, in the next fiscal year?
January.
In January. So that was, those increases were voted by the?
Right.
Amy, did you want to come up? Could you?
Yeah. I was unaware it was happening.
Sorry, Amy Howell, Community Service Deputy Director, Recreation and Beaches. So the two, which was the whole reason of us doing the, the new policy, but the two licenses for agreement that happened in the community center, their fee is $150 a month. That is what they've been at. Per your request at the last meeting, they will be staying at that for the next six months. So I'm not sure if it's in the license. It just would need to be fixed. But so they have been at 150. I know when we approved the permission to use, everyone that had been doing programs, they would stay per your order. They would stay for the next six months at the price that they were currently paying. So right now, they currently pay 150 a month. So they will stay at that for six months. Then they will move up to the 20%, where it will be even across the board for everyone.
January 20, January 1.
January 2026, yes.
So you're, Ms. Hunter, you're paying 150 now?
Yes.
And that will continue this summer?
Correct.
Through January?
Until January.
Okay.
But it's.
Okay.
All right.
Well, the fees were raised by the Parks and Rec Commission, and I think the board approved them recently.
Didn't we make an adjustment, or we were going to re?
Yeah, that was.
Re, to the 10% from our?
Right.
But, yeah.
We all get to stay where we are until January, but.
Yeah. See, I'm, I, I think there's something here that's not clicking right as far as, you know, people that have bigger, you know, have classes with people in them, and they're paying not just a set fee, but they're paying an additional class fee, whether this is really equitable for, or even just sustainable for some of the, the smaller classes. I know the argument had been that, well, if they were paying brick and mortar, that'd be a different story. But this isn't the intent of the community center. You know, I mean, community centers oftentimes, you know, those kind of classes, you don't, as a, as a, as a client, you're not paying, you know, an exercise fee plus all this other stuff, you know, to attend. It's affordable for a lot of people. I, I'm just, I mean, I want to approve Sue's license, but I, I'm just, for some reason, this just isn't sitting like equitably for me. I, and we approved it, but I just think that maybe we need to, I think, I think I need to sit with it for a little while and just think about why this is not sitting right with me.
Yeah, well, this is not the first.
Right. Exactly. Yeah.
Because we had that recently. And, you know, I, we should probably approve something tonight.
Sure.
And then if you have some ideas, and, you know, maybe we can make some adjustments. We just have to be equitable to everybody this time.
Of course, of course.
Stuart.
Sure. I think my first introduction to this was the, the lady from Orleans was doing something at Lighthouse Beach.
Yeah, I remember that.
Down there. And it was, we kind of had a similar discussion where it was 10%.
Same vibe.
And January 1 proposed to go to 20%. It, it seems to me that there should be a different fee, I don't know what the fees are, but a different fee for, basically the town doesn't do anything for the folks down at Lighthouse Beach, other than they let them use the beach. I don't think we're doing anything else. And maybe people who use a building pay a different fee. But this across the board, 20%, I, I agree with Shereen. Maybe, I'd like to revisit that before January 1, and just keep it at the 10% for now.
We'll make that an agenda item request from you, Stuart. Okay?
You're going to have to have twice a week meetings.
We'll be back to 60, too. But we'll do that. We'll put that on the agenda for both of you. And, and, but we, we need to take some action tonight, so.
I move approval of, of, is it a license?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll second.
Of.
I think we need to do it. When, when do you start?
Oh, I've been there.
Okay.
Yeah, Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Point is clear. So what, what is the fee?
It's $150 right now until January 1.
Right. Just want to, just want to be very clear over that.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
And that was the fee on the other one as well, Amy?
Yes.
Yeah.
150 for the, for the prior two?
Yeah. And then the, my free fee structure will change to a percentage.
January 1, unless we do something in between now and then.
Okay.
All right. So let's call the roll. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you. You're all set. Next, Lighthouse Beach Operational Plan, 2025 Staffing Update. This has been requested by Select Board Clerk Stuart Smith and Select Board Member Corey Matters. Potential vote on the 2025 Operational Plan Alternate. So I guess we'll call Amy, Amy to, to, she's already there. And please begin.
Right. Good evening again. So I, I'm just going to start with just a little background of how we got where we're at currently. So we do start accepting applications and promoting all of our jobs, all of our seasonal jobs at the beginning of the new year, so in January. So this year, beginning of April, we had zero applicants for our Lighthouse Beach Patrol. So obviously, that raised some concerns. And I brought them to my supervisor, Leah LaCrosse, also to the recommission, to let them know that we were concerned that we were not going to get enough qualified candidates to fill the positions at Lighthouse Beach. So at that time, in the back of our head, we kind of came up with a contingency plan, which is the Beach Monitor. But with that, still moving forward, the recommission asked us to really push between April and May, really push the position. We sent it out to the paper. Human Resources sent it out to numerous different groups. You know, we pushed it as much as we could. Come May, still zero applicants, one returner, who can only work two or three days a week. So at that point, you know, we're six weeks out from the start of the season. So we may, had to make a decision to, while also still recruiting for Lighthouse Beach Patrol, to also get approval for this Beach Monitor position. The recommission did approve it at the May 12 meeting on the condition of getting town council's approval, and then also still pushing for the Lighthouse Beach Patrol. We did receive approval from town council at the. We did receive approval from Town Council at the end of May and posted the Beach Monitor position probably the very end of May, beginning of June, about twenty days out from technically our opening day. When we posted the Beach Monitor position, the first two or three days, we must have received ten to fifteen applicants right away. And this is obviously because Lighthouse Beach Patrol is a very hard position. They have to be very qualified swimmers, responsible, be able to commit to eight to nine hour shifts. And as with all lifeguard positions, you'll see the trend for the last five to six years, especially after COVID, especially on the Cape, but also nationwide, that it's been harder and harder to recruit lifeguards, unfortunately. So unfortunately, we are right there with it. So we have, so that brings us to, to where we are. We have hired seven Beach Monitor positions. Last week I received the request to put together a Beach Operation Plan. The goal for our Beach Monitors is really to educate the public. We're all well aware of the safety concerns at Lighthouse Beach. Lighthouse Beach is a very different, different animal to manage compared to our other beaches. It's very dynamic. It's always evolving. Every year, the Park and Rec Commission and the Board of Health walk Lighthouse Beach to see any changes, see any changes in the land that will cause safety issues, flowing currents, steeper drop offs, all of it every year. And so we understood that safety concerns were going to be a huge issue without having Beach Patrol on the beach. So again, Beach Monitors, with them out there educating the public of the dangers of the beach, having them at different stations throughout Lighthouse Beach, educating them about the currents, about the tidal shifts, about the drop offs, about the swim at your own risk, which Lighthouse Beach has always been. And really kind of be ambassadors to Lighthouse Beach so that we can still hopefully prevent any incidents from happening by, you know, getting our message out there and educating everyone that goes down to Lighthouse Beach. And that brings us to right here. Obviously, our goal is, is still to recruit and retain lifeguards even for this season, for, for Beach Patrol, to get them certified for that and for future seasons. This is kind of a, you know, this is an alternate, alternative plan to maintain safety at the beach with the staff that we currently have.
Thank you, Amy. Dean's returning. I've just, can you just briefly, how many, how many Mont Beach Monitors will you have in any given shift, morning till night?
So our goal would be to have four monitors out there daily. So we would have three real stations and, you know, we call them stations, but they won't be stationary. They will be kind of, you know, engaging with the public, moving around. So one would be all the way out at the point. The sandbar out there, it can go really far out at low tide. So we'd really want a monitor out there to educate anyone that's out there that's on the soundbar or sandbar, especially at tidal shifts. We would have one down in the beach swimming area, kind of roaming and making sure people understand what the rules and regulations are, you know, and any dangers, and then kind of one at the base of the stairs where they'd really be able to capture, hopefully, everyone that's coming down the entrance to Lighthouse Beach and then supervisor kind of roaming, roaming throughout the four.
Thank you. Stuart, you had requested this. I'll let you go first and then Corey and Shereen.
Thank you. So I just. It's kind of similar to my, these other agenda items in that we're a week before the Fourth of July and, you know, we're faced with a very different plan than we have had for, you know, fifteen years or so. And one of the questions I guess I had was, what are we paying the, what have we budgeted to pay the folks down at Lighthouse Beach as lifeguards, not?
What's the total budget or per lifeguard?
Per lifeguard. Is there a range? Is there like a range?
Yep. So our first year guards, or if they're, they've been recently certified, are nineteen fifty-seven, I want to say, the exact. And then if you're an experienced guard and you're already certified, it's twenty dollars and sixty cents.
So, you know. Okay, nine fifty-seven to. So I just, I just made a few, just because I know these people. The Seashore is paying seventeen forty-three to twenty-six eleven. And they also offer housing. Nauset Beach pays eighteen ten to twenty-two fifty-six. So this is right up in Orleans, right up, you know, a similar type water environment, maybe a little bit more volatile. They also offer housing at a substantial reduced rate from. Nantucket is twenty-seven dollars an hour and also they offer housing. So I, I guess when we were recruiting for these positions, did we look at these rates and see if they were competitive with these other communities that are, have a similar type of beach environment?
Yeah, actually, we have a Beach Managers Group on Cape Cod and we meet twice a year. And in the fall, Chatham actually hosts it and we compile a survey, if you will, of all Cape towns, not including the islands, of all the salaries, all the fees. Here's kind of a page of it. This is all the salaries. So that way, you know, we all try and work together because we're all in the same boat. And quite frankly, we all use it, right? If they see it's, if another town sees another town much higher than them, they use that to go increase their rates. So, you know, we kind of all have the same goal in mind on the Cape and that's safety of the beaches. So we do work with other, you know, every other beach manager and we are right up there competitive wise with rates.
So I would argue that we're not competitive with at least these other three communities that I just named. Maybe some of the, maybe some of the other ones on the rate scale perhaps, but at least not these three, especially when you include the fact that they're helping with housing. You know, we, we have a, so if they're helping with housing, our rates should be higher than where they are now because, you know, they're not, we're not even helping with housing. So it seems to me that our rates are really out of whack with at least these three other communities. And I think that they're similar water environments. Maybe Chatham now is a little more docile than it used to be. It's certainly more calm, but compared to these other communities, it may be something to look at. So these folks, see, I'm really concerned about putting people who are not qualified to go in the water down on a beach that we've had a history of issues with. And I think it puts those people on the beach, these monitors, in a bad situation. If somebody's in distress, I'm just kind of playing through, if somebody's in distress, we're, and they're not allowed to go in the water, puts them in a really bad position. And now we're faced with, according to the plan, to call the beach supervisor or, and I, yeah, the beach, the on-scene commander for any incident Lighthouse Beach, which will be the beach supervisor. But the beach supervisor, that isn't one of these monitors. That's somebody else that roams around the beaches or some?
Yeah, it's the, I guess if you want to call it the beach monitor supervisor, is, I mean, what you're asking?
That's exactly what I'm asking. So this Lighthouse Beach supervisor is that person, there's always going to be that person to handle an incident at Lighthouse Beach when those monitors are there?
Yeah, so, you know, unfortunately, we can't make applicants appear, so we have two options. We can have no lifeguards or no Beach Patrol on the beach, or we can have monitors who are, are trained. So there's no difference, you could say, to the public calling nine one one. Well, the difference is that our monitors will have direct line to the Harbor Master Division, who then can quickly send, you know, a boat over, patrol over for any incident. They're also trained, they'll also be trained in first aid and CPR. So, you know, if it is on land, which many incidents are, whether it's a heart attack or not, we will have people on the beach trained to handle those. So we, we understand the concern because they cannot make water rescues, but our options are limited. And we just have to make a decision at, you know, do we have beach monitors who can be there quickly, initiate an emergency response as quick as possible, can also are trained, will be trained, you know, to collaborate with emergency personnel and, you know, directing them to where the accident has happened, what to look for, you know, whether it's communicating over the radio with Harbor Master on the shore through the radio and directing them that, hey, they're shifting towards, you know, North Beach or they're shifting towards the inlet. You know, and we'll have direct lines of communication for that. Again, we, we understand it's not ideal that we can't make water rescues. And, and that's why, you know, we came up with this alternative plan to at least have some type of safety measures in place for the beach.
You know, on, on the second page of this, I guess it's a draft plan. It says, "The purpose is to develop an operational plan that will improve public safety at Lighthouse Beach." This plan is not improving public safety at Lighthouse Beach. This is taking away a longstanding plan that did provide some degree, albeit not to the national standard for lifeguards. It provided some degree of public safety at Lighthouse Beach because the people were trained to go in the water, they had their surfboards, and now we don't have that. So I'm arguing with the fact that we're improving public safety at Lighthouse Beach because I don't think we are. You know, it's, it's, I, I don't, it's complicated as to how we got here. But I think that it's really, and, and there may be a cogent argument as to, okay, the conditions have changed at Lighthouse Beach and they've improved since years past, so maybe we need less of a presence or we need a different presence. This isn't it. And I think we're here simply because we didn't offer enough money and we didn't do an aggressive enough recruitment to get these qualified people here. It's a bad situation. We're going to be putting people on the beach that aren't qualified to go in the water and they're going to be stuck when somebody runs into trouble. The success of this plan in the past was always redundancy. We have no redundancy now because these people can't go in the water after a swimmer in distress. And we're going to be relying on one boat on the east side of Chatham that's going to respond to Lighthouse Beach. Let's hope he's not halfway down Montemoy because he's going to be twenty minutes getting there. So we didn't fleet up any of the resources at the Harbor Masters office in order to cover for this. I think we should have had this discussion, you know, earlier on. And I think you should be provided the resources to, to have a real presence at Lighthouse Beach. And we should have a discussion as to, you know, do we want to do this or do we not want to do this? But we shouldn't be doing, we should be doing that in January or February in, in a week before the Fourth. So, you know, I appreciate your efforts, but I, I don't believe you're being given the resources to succeed down there and I see this being as a, a hu, a huge issue potentially if we have a problem. Thankfully, the conditions have improved down there, but I think we need to train people down there.
Stuart, can I ask you a question about the, the housing support? Are they being provided free housing or just assistance?
They, they, they pay a reduced rate than the commercially available housing. So for instance, on Nantucket, you know, the Harbor Master runs the Lighthouse or the lifeguard program and she uses the old Coast Guard Loran Station barracks. So they have kind of, it's kind of very handy. Orleans, I think they have a motel or something, a former motel, so that's also, you know, handy for them. And I don't know what the Seashore does. I don't know. We clearly don't have those resources. But we do have the resources to pay more money, or at least what these folks are paying, so we can be competitive in the market and we're not there.
Corey, this was also your item, so you go next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, I mean, I, I appreciate the situation that we're in. I mean, I'm the liaison to the Park and Rec Commission. I know you've been giving updates to the, you know, to the Park and Rec about the status of our guards and it's, it's hard to get the bodies. I, I recognize that's a Cape Y problem. It's not, it's not a Chatham problem, it's a Cape Y problem. But I could also tell we were getting kind of a lukewarm feeling that we, we were going into the, the Plan B. We were being forced into the Plan B option of, for the beaches. We have a beach management plan that's been in place for, you know, forever. And then this is, this is the, this is the Plan B that we're being pushed into because of the lack of resources. So I'm, you know, I have some concern about, you know, what, you know, should we be putting these monitors out there? You go back and forth. It's, it's tough. It's having, having some resources out there has some benefits. But having some person out there on a beach that historically will, could provide another incident, it could be a tough situation for them, you know, with this. And then I, I know there's legal opinions about, you know, we were, this has been a not guarded beach forever. I mean, we've never officially guarded this beach and the dynamics have certainly changed over the years. So I just want to figure out how to best collectively, because this is not a Select Board sole issue, it's not a Park and Rec issue. The Board of Health is jurisdiction. We need to come up with a better long-term plan to, 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 to provide the resources to this beach because even our regular guards, if I, if I remember the reports you were giving us, we've got some who are here for shorter times, some for longer times. Even the standard guards for the, the Bridgevilles, Hardings, Cockle Coves, you know, aren't exactly what we're looking for. And there's a very realistic scenario that maybe it's going to be Harding's, Harding at Ridgeville. And, you know, there could be beaches that may not have enough source, resources anyway. But Lighthouse is a different beast, beast, and I really want to make sure that we can address it to the best of our ability. I mean, I know Meredith, or the Park and Rec Chair is present and I'd like to invite her to the podium if possible at some point.
It was my intention once we completed the board comments.
All right, thank you.
Shereen.
Yeah, so there's frustration obviously around stopping and, and whatever. And there's an idea of putting a Band-Aid on something and hoping that it'll be okay. And I just go back to like North Beach, like, you know, when you're out on the outer beach, you're, you're out there, you're, you're sub, you're responsible for yourself, you're subject to, you know, the risks and, and that will incur. There is a Beach Patrol that drives up and down the, the beach and has probably, you know, somewhat certified, certifications for CPR, life-saving, not, you know, but they don't go in the water either.
There's none on North Beach.
Nothing on North Beach, no. And so I, I guess, is it, is it going back to the older times when there wasn't really nothing there and just swim at your own risk kind of thing versus us setting ourselves up for some sort of failure? I don't think that's the safest scenario, but I'm just curious to hear more about what kind of, whether this program would actually fit and, you know, have the focus it needs to be or whether it's better just to have a lot of warnings that are out there.
It's my intention after we complete our board comments, our initial comments, to ask the town manager to talk to this as well.
Great, thanks.
Jeff.
Thank you, Dean. I just have a couple of questions. We've never had a, it's never been lifeguarded, ever? I'm talking about Lighthouse Beach.
There's a caveat to that.
Okay.
And there's a caveat to that in that the Lighthouse Beach has never been formally guarded because this goes back a long time. But when, when that proposal was given, it would have required twelve to fifteen guard, you know, lifeguard stands and lifeguards. It became way too large, so we settled on a, you know, folks on ATVs who were lifeguard certified. We even had EMTs down there. They all had their AED and first, first aid training. And they, we even sent them to the Seashore for the more advanced lifeguard training. So, yes. So, yes, not formally lifeguarded, but we had a presence, we had a guarded presence.
The reason why it required so many lifeguards, you have to have a lifeguard every so many feet.
Exactly, yes.
I'll, I'll call on Meredith in a minute, I just, go ahead, why don't you finish?
It's important to note that beach monitors will not respond to emergencies in the water. So, what's the response hierarchy should we have emergency in the water?
So, if they witness an emergency in the water, they will immediately contact the Harbor Master and emergency personnel, and then they will communicate with them, depending on what it is, whether it's, you know, a paddleboarder that is stuck in the current heading out, sorry, did you have a comment?
Oh, paddleboarder, yeah.
Oh, so, getting stuck, you know, in the current, whether it's a distressed swimmer, and then their role is to maintain visual contact with, whether it's a paddleboarder, kayaker, distressed swimmer, while also communicating to emergency personnel about the situation, so that when they arrive on scene, they have a better response, knowing exactly where to go, what's happened, time, all of that.
So, the Harbor Master's call number one?
Harbor Master and emergency personnel.
So, being fire department as well?
Yes, 911.
911. Coast Guard, any, any involvement?
So, if the approved, if the, this plan is approved, like, in the past, it would be sent off to them, so they're aware of what the operational plan is.
So, does the Harbor Master have the resources to respond?
So, we met with Jason multiple times about the plan, you know, again, just trying to cover all of our bases for a not ideal plan, but to have a plan in place, and from what he says, you know, they have the resources, but obviously on a busy day, you know, they might not make it over there as fast as possible. So, I can't say that, you know, on some, or another emergency elsewhere, that they are going to get there fast. Again, that's why we'd be calling 911 as well.
Just a, just a quick follow-up, for, for the public walking down the stairs at Lighthouse Beach, it's very apparent that there aren't lifeguards and you swim at your own risk.
Yes.
Very apparent.
Yes.
Signs everywhere.
Well, what's your definition of everywhere?
I don't know, the top of the stairs, the bottom of the stairs, on the way?
Top of the stairs, bottom of the stairs, out at the sandpoint.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Ian.
Shereen, did you have another question?
But it eludes me right now, sorry.
Okay. Did you?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know where you want to head with this, but, and I, I know it was put together, you know, quickly, because we, we brought it up, but this plan needs a lot of work. I wouldn't implement this plan if, it needs a lot of work.
I, I just wanted to, the, the proposed sign that you have, it's in our packet, Lighthouse Beach, Chatham Mass Warning, No Lifeguards on Duty, I think if that, if you're going to go with this, "No lifeguards on duty," that phrase should be bolded and colored, because it's just the same grade out script as the rest of the, as the body of the, of the, of the sign. I have a question, and then I'm going to call on Meredith Frye. What is the legal risk to the town? Have we talked with, and I'm going to ask-
We, we did, yeah, we sent the proposal to Town Council, and their response was, you know, as long as we make it abundantly clear that there are no lifeguards and it is swim at your own risk, and that we don't present in any way as guards that didn't find an issue with it.
Okay.
I do have a question, too.
One other comment on page 10, I mean, I have a lot, but I, I don't want to hold you up forever, is, you ought to get some, we ought, we ought to get some new charts, and Andrew Hardings is not prohibited from swimming anymore.
Okay. Shereen?
Yeah, I just want to know, like, human nature-wise, you know, if you see somebody in the water and they're drowning, what's going to be your first instinct to, to do?
I think, I think you're going to see-
People are going to go in the water, yeah.
I think you're going to see another-
This is a really unfortunate situation.
Somebody's going to run, run into the water, and if somebody, you know, if one of the, the monitors runs into the water because they want to do the human thing, and something happens, seems to me the town has some potential liability there.
Liability to it. I, I, this is just a really unfortunate situation, and I just, you know, it's, it's really hard to, to navigate.
Meredith Frye, the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission, Meredith, do you have some comment on this, and then I'm going to turn to the town manager.
And I just want to make a note, Corey, that there's a typo on the sign, too, so.
Is there?
Yeah.
Up there.
Yeah, I hope these signs aren't printed yet.
We, these are just like the old ones, so the signs that were printed were, were-
There's the typo. Please, on the bottom.
Please is misspelled.
Oh.
Yeah, so the signs that were printed, we misspelled check it all, so, yeah.
Please.
Meredith?
Good evening, Meredith Frye, Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. As one of the originators of the Lighthouse Beach plan, along with Stuart Smith and other commission members, we worked really hard on the Lighthouse Beach plan to have beach patrol, and to, Lighthouse Beach has never been, it's always been a swim-at-your-own-risk beach. So, we had three drownings, and we came up with this Lighthouse Beach plan because at the time, the beach was very treacherous, the Board of Health was going to close it to swimming completely, but we came up with this plan. This is the first year we have not had patrol there, and it's a little mystifying to me that we couldn't find guards for this beach. This is the town's most popular beach, we have at least 800 visitors to this beach daily, people get dropped off in buses. I just don't think it was a priority, and we, I found a candidate last week, who is a teacher at Montomoy Regional High School, he's a coach, Selectman Metters knows him well, I know him well, he's also has quite the resume in lifeguarding, and he's the lead lifeguard at Cape Cod National Seashore, he's a lifeguard captain in Maine, where he, he spent over 3,000 hours, he rebuilt lifeguard programs and led all aspects of ocean rescue programs, national USLA certification, he planned, led, and designed lifeguard training, workouts, fundraising, community outreach initiatives, and I pointed him to staff, and I was told he could only do part-time, but he was very interested in developing our program, and helped, he would be an asset, he would recruit lifeguards. I was met with hesitation, so I went to Jill. I emailed her, I sent the resume, and he was set up with an interview. At the interview, he was told that, no, we are only hiring beach monitors for Lighthouse Beach, that's what he was told. So, he did not accept the position, he is overqualified, and this just is mystifying to me that this happened. We have this great potential candidate, and we let him slip through our fingers, and I spoke with him today, and he's still interested in helping us next year. He's already moved on, he's got his hands full at NOSET, but he still would like, these are the people we need to help our community, to help our beaches, to teach these kids that we were told there's no lifeguards because they're afraid of the swim test. That's what our commission was told. So, if a person like this candidate is available to us, and he will recruit and design our beach plans and rescues, and give these kids confidence in their swim test, this is the kind of person we want. So, I don't know how this all happened, how he slipped through the fingers of Chatham. We have a responsibility as a town to protect our visitors and our community, we are a beach-going town, this should be a priority. We, this plan got switched without really, we were just hoping we would find guards, that guards would be available, because it happened last year at the end of the season, but this beach should have been a priority. So, I think the beach monitor, having a presence there, if that's our only option, but we still should be looking, we still should be trying to recruit, I texted this candidate, and I'm like, do you know of anyone that could give us any time? And the hesitation with staff was, it was, he could only do part-time, but part-time is better than no time.
Meredith, did you have anything more you wanted to say right at the moment?
Well, I don't know if you have any questions for me, or the beach.
Yeah, the, the staff memo says that on May 12th, the, the commission voted ultimately to approve this transition, is, is that a correct statement?
We did vote to approve it, just because we didn't have another option, and it was a backup plan.
Okay.
And Lighthouse Beach has no paid parking, so the liability for the town is, as long as it's posted, swim-at-your-own-risk, I don't think it's a liability for the town.
Okay, thank you.
And it's always been a swim-at-your-own-risk beach, and it's also been closed off, but now, the whole beach is swim-at-your-own-risk.
Okay, you can stay there if you'd like. I'm going to ask Jill, if you, did you want to comment on any of, anything that has been proposed or said?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I, I know that HR and Amy's team has been working really hard to recruit people, and the status at Lighthouse Beach for what is being proposed tonight is, it's the same as it is with regard to swim-at-your-own-risk, signage is there. So, I think what we have to make a difficult decision here is to have no monitors there, and allow the public to be there on their own, and reassign the monitors that we've hired elsewhere, still swim-at-your-own-risk. I think no one of us felt comfortable with that, and when at least having the monitors there, if there is some quick action, or quicker action than just calling 911 if we can do something about it, but I don't think that's the end of the story for us, and we mentioned that in the staff report, that we are going to continue to recruit. I just got notification today that the, the seashore is going to have an unguarded beach. This isn't unique to Chatham, so if we can continue to recruit, the offer for that person to help train, that's great, recruit for next year, if not this year, we have a person on staff who's able to do the lifeguard certification for tas, uh, test for us, so I, I can't say more about how this is not ideal for us, it's, we can do nothing, which Town Council is very comfortable with, it's not that he approved it, we were looking at the exposure and the liability for it, or if we have the monitors there, he felt that there was no greater exposure if there were, was an incident. So, I, I know that we've been trying to work to do something, if it's another rate review, if it's, if it's looking at paying more for lifeguards, certainly will do it. I mean, one option that's not available to us is that I'm not comfortable moving lifeguards away from Harding's Beach or Ridgeville, and I'm not sure anyone would be, and this year in particular, too, we have really young lifeguards, there, many are not 18, so if we brought out the ATVs, they actually couldn't drive them. So, all of this, and again, it cul, it culminated on Friday because I felt it was really important that we have a new plan on file, and the new plan certainly was presented in the, in the packet tonight, there's some refinement to need, we, we just ran out of time. We want to be responsive to the select board's requests, and we also didn't want to have a plan on file that has an entirely different response and mechanism in place that we know for this season, at least today, is not going to be implemented. So, again, Amy's done a great job, Megan as well, we're trying to figure out a solution, and certainly welcome your suggestions.
Jill, do we, do we have any money available, if we wanted to raise the, the rates that would enhance recruitment?
Lighthouse Beach was funded the same as last year, so there's, there's funding in place for the beach patrol.
If we were to raise rates, do you think we would have a chance of getting some more qualified people in this, for this season?
I, I have to defer to Amy on that, if you have any insight.
Um, you know, that's, that's, that's hard to answer, I think, obviously, when you raise the rates, you know, on any level, it's going to help with recruitment. At this point, you'd be looking to maybe grab some people who are unhappy, maybe with their rate at another location, and I think it would have to be a pretty significant rate raised to, to have that happen, but it obviously can't hurt to raise the rates.
As I understand it, if we were going to replicate what we've had in place before, we would need three people, right?
You, well, you would need three people out there, so that typically is about, depending on what their availability, anywhere from eight to 12 on staff, because, unfortunately, to, to Corey's point, and what I, you know, right now, we have 25 guards, you know, staffed, four of which are junior guards, which is great, but there are many, many days that we have eight or nine of them available, because they all have other commitments, other responsibilities, trips, school stuff, and so, it's very rare, unfortunately, at this point, to get someone that is working 40 hours a week.
How many, how many, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, so, so, three on every day out at Lighthouse Beach, so again, you would need, again, depending on their availability, eight to 10.
How many did we have available last year for this, for Lighthouse Beach?
We had eight.
Okay. Shereen, you had a question?
I had a question for Jill, do you know what the seashore's plan is with that unguarded beach? Is it just nothing going to happen there?
I, I have to look, and Amy is nodding, we just got the notification this afternoon, so no guards.
Yep, signage.
I, I spoke with them yesterday, they're just going to post it.
So, there'll be nothing on that beach at all, except for the signage? Okay.
Meredith, did you have something you wanted to add?
Uh, yeah, we were talking about North Beach Island, and part of the Lighthouse Beach plan in the past was to educate the visitors, and I think that fell off the map in COVID somehow, so we, as a commission, and Amy helped greatly, we developed, she developed a QR code for, we called in anyone that was, any business that was dropping off, people at North Beach Island, so Quasit, CBI, private boat charters, so they have a QR code, and we, they came in, and we told them, this is what goes on at the beach, can you please tell your visitors, you know, about the sharks, about the steep currents, the drops, the currents, don't swim with the seals, and the coyotes that are even out there, just so people are educated as they get dropped off on that beach. If you're a boater, you pretty much know the beach, but there are so many people getting dropped off at North Beach Island that don't know anything about where they're, where they are. So, that's what we're doing for North Beach Island, and everyone was very cooperative.
You have a brochure, don't you, that you hand out?
There used to be, but instead of paper, now there's a QR code.
Okay, okay.
Which the boat captains are supposed to tell, and anyone on the boat, and educate them as they're driving to the beach.
Thank you. So, this, this matter is before us with the request that we approve this, this plan, and in light of all the conversation, I'm just going to ask my fellow board members, what do you want to do tonight?
May I just make one more comment?
Sure, go ahead.
I think having people with eyes out there is better than nothing, and if we get a guard in between, that the guard can work with the beach monitors, we just need maybe one guard and beach monitors, I think it's better than nothing, and continue to aggressively look for guards, and maybe offer more money for a beach supervisor, is, that's what that beach needs.
You'd want-
And they're there to educate, protect, and ultimately, if they have to, respond, and we just don't have the response part of the plan.
And ideally, you'd want a, a guard there every day.
Because there is that sandbar also that juts out into the channel, people try to swim across to North Beach Island, you just, even a beach monitor could call them back in, and if they're getting, you know, pushback, they can call, you know, the Harbor Master, they can call 911, and also, they can call people off the sand- they can call 911. And also, they can call people off the sandbar when there's a change of tide. That's when the current starts to rip. That's when they could be potentially in a boat channel.
Okay.
So I think, before you make your vote, it's something to consider. I think this plan is a temporary one, and we should really look at what we're doing at Lighthouse Beach for years to come. Our next year planned way ahead. And we need to pay our guards and our beach patrol more to make it more appealing to come and protect our beaches in Chatham. Also, I forgot what I was going to say. It's been a long night.
Well, if it comes back to you.
Yeah, okay.
Raise your hand.
Thank you.
Stuart, I think you had your hand up.
Well, I'm, I'm not inclined to approve the plan, because I think it's, it's a week before the 4th, and we shouldn't be here. So I would revert this back to the Parks and Rec folks and, and the town manager. They can, they can put forward the plan. They don't need our approval. They've had the money. I think one year Dan Tobin signed it, another year I signed it, you know, it's been all over the road. But I don't, I don't see any that the select board ever approved. Or we, we've talked about with the select board and informed them, kept them up to speed, you know. But the, the operational plan was approved by some staff member. And that seems to be, have changed a lot over the last many years. I do believe in that this is a, this is kind of like a bigger issue than just Lighthouse Beach. We, we have, we seem to like, some general said, you know, I've met the enemy and I think it's us. We've created such a bureaucracy. Meredith has, you know, given a dissertation on just trying to get somebody hired, that we're our own worst enemy. I think that the town should consider, not this summer, but should consider making the Parks and Rec Department stand alone like it did for 75 years. And, and break it away from this other department that we've tried to mold it or meld it into. We have parks, we have endless beaches, most of which are under the jurisdiction of the Parks and Rec Commission. And we have cemeteries that had trouble getting attention. And I think part of it is due to the fact that we've created these super departments, we've created bureaucracy within them. And sometimes these, these entities like Lighthouse Beach gets short-sighted or gets lost in the, in the ruffle. But I do believe it would be hugely helpful for the town to consider making its own department. This town, it's not, it's not a lot more money, and it certainly has a lot of responsibility when you include all the beaches, parks, you want to include some cemeteries in there. But I think it would be, I think it would be very helpful to consider such a thing.
Amy, do you have, if this plan goes into effect, do you have the, the monitors available? Do you, you've got, how many do you have?
We have seven.
Seven, okay. Any other comments from the board on what to do tonight? Cory?
Frankly, I don't think we need to take any actions tonight. I think it was important that they, that we weighed in. I mean, Parks and Rec's jurisdiction, Border Health has jurisdiction on this, too, don't forget. So I think there, there is a plan in place. This is, and I respectfully say it is, a Plan B. We, we're not going to be able to snap our fingers and get more bodies or more qualified bodies tomorrow. It's, it's not happening. But we clearly identified the voids that we have, the concerns we have. And we need to, you know, if at all possible, make some improvements to, to this season. That would be ideal. But at the very, very least, we should have things, address the issues that have been brought up tonight, so we have a much bulkier plan for next year. That's at the very least. So I don't think we need to say yea or nay. I mean, the plan's been in place for forever. We know where we want to be. We don't have all the pieces at present. And hope we strive for feelings, getting it back to where we want to be. This is the reality of it. So I don't think we need to do anything tonight.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just say that I agree with Meredith, Meredith's summation. Something's better than nothing. You have hired folks, you've got them under, under your wing, ready to go. So I'm more comfortable having monitors in place than having nothing in place. That being said, we clearly have a lot of work to do in getting this to the, where, where we want it to be in terms of oversight and safety and responsiveness. But at this late hour, I mean, this is Plan B. It's a Band-Aid at best. And I think it needs to be a higher priority, as you've noted. Thank you.
Any other comment?
I just make one more, or a couple more, and that is, we need to look beyond the, first of all, I think you need to re-advertise for this at a considerably higher rate. And maybe you would get somebody, you know, to fleet over from another community, or some, somebody who has a lifeguard certification that would, you know, be attracted to a higher wage. But they're not going to come here for that. And the, the other thing is, and this is just a stopgap, but, you know, maybe you can consider, you know, asking the harbor master whether, you know, they have any staff for a second boat over there. We used to run a second boat, so I don't know where that stands now. They may not have the staff either. But, and, and the sound manager and you folks may come back and say, hey, you know what? Next year, the conditions have improved a large, to a large degree, and we can change the plan. We can move it down, we can move it up. I'm not, I'm not advocating for this huge operation down there yet. But I am, I'm just, you know, a little disappointed that we're here right now. And I think we could have done some things to avoid it. So maybe put another boat, I mean, they have another boat. Maybe they can get another person to put down there for the summer.
I totally agree with Stuart on his point about the other towns are throwing in housing. Our rate needs to be higher, because we're not offering housing. Just by, by, just competitive nature. Our rates need to be much higher if they're throwing in housing. Thanks.
I'd like to bring this to closure. We still have a lot of other items on the agenda. So I, I don't think that despite the recommendation and the, or the request in the memo, that it requires our approval. I think the town manager and her staff are able to implement this plan. And I agree with Meredith and Jeff, having the monitors is better than nothing. And I would encourage you to do that. But I would also encourage the staff to try to recruit as expeditiously as possible. Look at the, look at the rates. There seems to be money for it. See if we can get some people in place this summer, if possible. Do what, do the best we can. But those are my comments. I don't think we need to take any vote tonight, unless there are any further comments from the town manager or the department.
No, no votes needed tonight. So we'll move on as recommended. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next item is, consider the approval of the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust financing agreement. This relates to the belt filter press over at, over at the water pollution control facility. Carrie Mazerol.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carrie Mazerol, Director of Finance. Yes, so this is, the town of Chatham has received an interim loan financing for Article 28, approved at the May 6, 2023 annual town meeting, which authorized 4.5 million for debt exclusion for the belt filter press replacement at the water pollution control facility. The Clean Water Trust approved a $3,671,588 for this project at 0% interest.
So I, I just had, you know, looking for the approval of the select board tonight.
Yes.
I had three questions on the documents. The first is on, it's three pages in the packet, two pages in the packet. It's the actual interim loan note to be signed by the treasurer. Do you have that one in front of you?
The interim loan note of CW 2342?
Says United States of America. It says, United States of America, Town of Chatham interim loan note, principal amount.
3.6.
3.6, yeah. Do you see that?
It's on the third page of our packet, or the second page, I saw.
It's right before the Schedule of Advances, the blank document that has lines.
Yeah, it's the page right after the letter.
Oh, United States of America, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
In the second paragraph, it says, "This note is issued pursuant to Chapter 29(c) and Chapter 44 (the general laws) as amended for the purpose of financing costs of a drinking water project." That kind of threw me, because it's really a sewer project. I don't know if, if you don't have an answer to it, I think we should just clarify that with the bond council.
Yep, I can.
Okay. Because that's a defined term.
Yeah. I don't know why she put drinking water.
Yeah.
Because it's not.
It's a clean water project.
It's clean water, yes. Because it would have been a DW and not a, it's a CW.
Yeah. Then on the, many pages in, I don't know how many, but it's the financing agreement itself, which we're voting to approve. It's toward the end. It has a date of November 6, 2024 on it.
Yes. And that's when a Clean Water Trust approved.
Oh.
And it's, it got, unfortunately, it kind of got delayed.
Okay.
And I should have brought it here the last time I came in June, but we found out it, about it later on. So now here I am.
So that's not an error?
No, it's not.
Okay. And the final is on the Schedule A to that document. It says, "The closing date is May 30th, 2028." That kind of threw me, because.
Yeah. So it's an interim loan, so it goes into a short-term kind of process first. And then it closes, it finally comes to a long-term note. And that's when it becomes long-term.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions?
I want you to note that I noted that as well.
I'm glad you did, Mr. Dikens.
Really good catch on the.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any, anybody have any questions? I'll entertain, there's a lot of.
Move to approve. I haven't got the exact verbiage in front of me, but I moved to approve the financing.
It's been seconded. Moved and, moved and seconded. I'll call the roll. Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Dykens.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will get that answer for you.
And we have to sign something tonight, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, consider approval of the FY 2026 Orleans Adult Supportive Day Memorandum of Agreement with the Town of Orleans, the Rock Harbor Respirer Program. This is for the four individuals who are still in the Orleans program, who are not likely to transfer to the Chatham program. And.
Correct.
Orleans is not taking any more, any more Chatham people in the future, but it's important. Okay.
You just gave my whole report.
Leah Lacrosse. I'm looking at the clock.
Hi, good evening. Leah Lacrosse, Director of Community Services. As Dean just said, last year, when I came before you, asking you to renew the memorandum of agreement, there were 14 Chatham residents that were in the Orleans Day Program. There are now four. And as I stated last year, last time we talked about this, even though we're walking into our sixth month of our Supportive Day Program here in Chatham, there are still four people whose lives would be very disrupted if we attempted to move them, if we, if we told them they had to come to Chatham. I've talked to the families and the caregivers, and they said, you know, Leah, we love Chatham, you know, they come and participate at our programs. But they said it took, took so long to get them acclimated to the Orleans program that it would be very detrimental to move them again. I tend to agree with that. So I'm respectfully asking that the board approve to allow those four individuals for continued participation. And as Dean stated, the Orleans program has closed off any, no, no Chatham residents can be, can enroll in their program. So there won't be any more. It's these last four. And the, it's important to note that funding for the program was approved in the FY 26 budget in the amount of 15,600. Doing the math, it costs, if they attended every day that their program was open, it would cost 3,120 per year for each individual. If they attended every single day the program was open, that would be a total of 12,480. So we, we have the money in the budget for that.
And just as an aside, we have our own program, and I think we have five or six people in it. One.
Yes, we have five.
One has dropped off because they had, because they had to be, go to advanced care.
Yes, that's correct. And, but we did add one more.
Okay.
So we have five.
That's moving along nicely.
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve this?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that the select board approve and sign the memorandum agreement between the Town of Chatham and the Town of Orleans for the Orleans COA Adult Supportive Day Program.
Second.
And it's been seconded. Any discussion? This is something we've done over the years.
We've done it before.
All right, I'll call the roll. Mr. Dykens.
Uh, yes.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
I'm sorry, I did it backwards.
Aye.
Mr. Matters.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Thank you, Leah.
Thank you all very much for that.
Next item is update on year one of the Community Services Behavioral Health Clinical Program. And I think you and Chief Anderson are going to talk about this. And Diane Nash is our, is our adult behavioral health clinical clinician. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Hey, how about some good staffing news tonight?
How about some good news, period?
So we are just, we just completed the first year of the first behavioral health clinician. We, we're going to make this extremely brief, but not brief enough to, to cut out the awesome work that Diane Nash has done and is doing for this community. Just to give you a little backstory of how we got here, I'll, I'll let Leah describe that.
Okay. So out of recommendation from the Human Services Committee, Chief Anderson and I met pretty much weekly to analyze data from both the Council on Aging and the Police Department, to look at the statistics for how many people the Police Department, how many calls they were responding to that were behavioral health-related. And the same thing at the Council on Aging, how many of our participants were in need of behavioral health services. So we, we put together a presentation back in 2022, and in response to the, the growing demand for behavioral health services. And we proposed that, one and then two clinicians would be hired. And we were very fortunate enough to get Diane Nash as our first clinician. I will let Chief Anderson get into a lot of the statistics, and then you'll hear from Diane herself very briefly. But I want to say, I can't say enough what a success this program has been, in, in parts, and mostly due to Diane, because she has taken this, she stepped in with, you know, very little direction. You're a clinician and you're going to take care of the town. And she has done so with utmost vigor and responsibility and, and care and compassion and respect for all the individuals she served. Chief and I get to see it every day, and we're lucky. And there's, we, we thought we knew what the demand was. We, I don't think we really had any idea until Diane started serving the community. And I'm going to keep it brief, so I'll turn it over to the chief.
Okay, so thanks. It's very difficult to give you a slide deck presentation with a bunch of numbers to show you the amount of work or the amount of statistics, because it doesn't really capture the value of, of her position. It could be just five people or one person that, that she makes a difference with. And, and the other challenge that we had was, we really had an open playbook, because we really had to make this up as we went along. We looked at other communities, what they had, and we took their best practices and everything that, you know, we, we did a lot of homework. We took a lot of field trips to these different communities. And, and you can see, this was the goal. And really, the goal, and in just a couple of words, is divert the people who are having mental health issues away from the criminal justice system. That's the primary goal. Because before that, before Diane, there were very, very few options that law enforcement or our behavioral health partners could do, other than insert these people into the criminal justice system. So these are the challenges that we faced. Again, we were coming up. Again, we were coming up with this with an open slate. So, the, the police, I can only speak for them, we had lack of time and resources for follow-up. Once the initial call had been addressed, the citizen had no other person to turn to except maybe the police officer who responded the night before. There was a real good chance that that police officer was not available when the, when the person in crisis was, was needed them the next day. And our partners in the private sector, there's not enough to go around, we have to share the time and resources with them. And again, I think what we said was, you know, the, the citizens in this town, they, they deserve more. We, we pride ourselves in trying to give them the best public service on the Cape, and I, and I think this is an example of that.
Chief, can I just interject?
Sure.
And as far as the Council on Aging goes, you know, we have a, an outreach coordinator, and the role of an outreach coordinator is to help with fuel assistance, food programs, and help them get those kind of services. When we had, when, we often have people walking into our building in, with a behavioral health crisis, and now being able to, we call Diane, and she's right there, and that is invaluable.
So, in our opinion, we've, we've reached the, we've met the goal, the first goal, is Diane is available every day, she's available nights, she's available weekends, she's been contacted on holidays. At the time, currently, there was no liaison between public safety and mental health providers. There is now, there's living proof. Goal met. Clearly, persons in crisis are reluctant to deal with uniform police. As you can see, we have one in the audience to support Diane. You can see, he is outfitted with his equipment as a police officer, and if you're a person in crisis, there's, the, the statistics show that the anxiety and stress level of the person will decrease when they, when they meet Diane, as opposed to a uniformed police officer. At the time, there was no established connection between public safety and mental health providers, there was a lack of professional relationships. We achieved this goal because now we have a permanent bridge between public safety and these agencies. Most involvements with our persons in crisis are not criminal, but at the time, public safety were the only ones that were, were responding to these types of calls. That has now been met, and, and I think Leah just mentioned, the, the COA or the CFAL staff can only go so far in their assistance. Sorry about that. So what we did is, we looked at what their essential functions would be. Obviously, one, we want to be able to identify all persons in crisis, direct these persons of all ages, intervention and de-escalation. Instead of just by police officers removing them, we have the clinician to either respond with the CFAL, co-response with police, or if safe to do so, a follow-up either at the police station or at a place that's comfortable for the person, as you can see in number four. As we mentioned, currently, the clinician is very grateful, gracious, that she has after-hour response. One of the essential functions was the issue of Section 12, which is those are involuntary committals to a mental health facility, and the statistics I have coming up are going to be different, because we just handled one probably about four hours ago.
Is that the pink slip?
That is the pink slip, yes. So far this year, in, in the past year that Diane's been here, the Police Department, six hundred and twenty-five individual calls for service. It averages, so, so far, we had forty-seven Section 12s, and we are right about where we should be. The year, five-year average is fifty-four, and the CFAL currently has about seven hundred and sixty-four calls. Before I introduce you, her to you, again, I, I can't express the gratitude from my staff to the board and Jill for recognizing this, creating this position, funding it adequately, and, and giving us the, the room to grow and the support to, to grow it. And I'll, I'll bring, I'll bring Diane up, and if she wants to say a few words.
Thank you, that was so nice. Hi, my name's Diane Nash, and I am the Behavioral Health Clinician, and I just want to say that I love my job. I come to work every day, and I love it, and that's huge. I just feel very grateful to have this job. So I just wanted just to briefly read a little summary that I wrote at the end of, or at the beginning of May, which marked my one-year anniversary. So, May 6 marked the one-year anniversary in my role as a town's first adult behavioral health clinician. Tasked with launching a brand-new role without a defined blueprint, this past year has been one of deep personal and professional growth. I embrace the challenge by relying on my experience, creativity, and adaptability. With the support of Leah Lacrosse and Chief Anderson, I shaped the position into a vital community resource, developing protocols, building partnerships, and learning through experience. This role has brought along emotional and physical challenges, dealing with everything from severe mental illness and abuse to homelessness and end-of-life care. Yet it has also been filled with moments of inspiration and triumph. I cannot overlook the importance of collaboration and community, and I credit the success of this position to strong relationships with local agencies and colleagues. Speaking of collaboration, I was initially uncertain about how I would be, be received by the Chatham Police Department, but I'm happy to report that I have much appreciation and admiration for the Chatham police officers, as they have been welcoming, they've been supportive, and they've been very protective of me. Ultimately, this first year has been a testament to resilience, trust, and the power of teamwork. I feel immense gratitude for the opportunity to serve Chatham, and I'm deeply committed to the mission of easing suffering and offering hope. As I head into year two in my position, I hope to reach more community members and better understand their needs to serve them more effectively.
Thank you, Diane. The board commends you for your service, and we commend Chief Anderson and Leah Lacrosse and the Town Manager for, for instituting this program. If, if anyone wants to know more in detail, they just should read the Town Manager's report, which is on our agenda later on, the sections from the Police Department and also from the Council on Aging. And every month, the Council on Aging gets a report in great detail of the numbers that you've simply just alluded to tonight, so if anyone else has anything they want to say, Stuart?
Yeah, could you go to the, the goal slide?
I'll try.
So, yep, I think you, there you go. I'm curious, and, and maybe those numbers showed it, Chief, I don't, I wasn't following it or hearing it, but was the numbers that you gave, the six hundred and some, were those your mental health calls?
Strictly mental health calls, strictly mental health calls.
It's-
Before Diane, those were, those were my calls.
Yeah, right.
After Diane, we, we can co-respond with her, or those are her and the CFAL's calls. The, the burden that has been lifted off the Police Department, and, and the increase and the return on the investment to the citizens by this position speaks for itself.
Yeah, no, it's, it's impressive. The, so I'm, how many, this is probably a very difficult number, but how many do you, would you guess, folks, you're not putting through the criminal justice system because we've had this teamwork intervention that, if that, if, might be a hard number?
I mean, I think, I think that each person that I encounter is keeping them out of any kind of legal problems, or hopefully, you know, more severe mental health, substance abuse. I also work really closely with our recovery coach, so just collaborating with everyone, I think that we touch on, or, you know, this position is able to divert every, every Chatham resident that I work with, or even some are people that are here or visiting.
Yeah, sure. Well, you, you three have done a great job, so you should be proud of your work. Thank you.
Shereen.
Just, just a couple of comments, and I, I think that I, this is one of the best things that, you know, I feel to be part of as a Select Board member, is to bring a sense of community, care to Chatham in a way that is, that makes a whole lot of sense. I mean, it certainly does, and Diane is a perfect person for this, for this kind of work, obviously with her background. The collaboration that you guys are achieving is, is really great. I, I don't, I mean, that's a lot of work. I mean, when you're talking about those kind of numbers for one individual to be doing, you know, whether that you're building a casework out of that many people, or, or whether those were just, you know, like multiple calls about one issue or, or whatever, but I really applaud this program and the team that I see in front of me. I'm really proud that you guys are representing us in the, in the, in the fight for mental wellness for our community and, and quality of life. Thank you.
Jeff.
Yeah, well, this was overdue, and I'm really, really pleased, I agree with Shereen that this was a, a great effort. On your part and the Select Board's part, and I think we also approved a, a youth counselor, but that was since, I think, morphed that into another adult counselor, counselor, or we're recruiting?
I was going to ask Jill, Jill, do you want to talk about that?
I believe we're recruiting for another Diane Nash, if you will, or someone similar to Diane. Could never replicate Diane, but, but given those numbers, I think it's, I think it's appropriate, it's warranted. I mean, I, I, those, those numbers are considerable.
I would agree with you, and yes, recruitment is underway for our second clinician, and again, that speaks to Diane with the fact that, you know, seven hundred and sixty-four clients, or seven hundred and sixty-four interactions just at the CFAL, let alone the Police Department, and she's handled that herself. You know, she has the option to say no on nights and weekends, and if, if she's needed, she's come in. I mean, I can't tell you how many times she leaves the building and we call her, because something, you know, has come up, and she turns right around. You know, we also, the thing that I've seen with my, with my background, you know, where I've been Duffy and everything else, these people keep coming back to see her, and that says everything.
Oh, it does, yeah.
Because getting continuity from these individuals, they want help one day and not the next, but they come back to see Diane because they have a really, they really trust her, and I think that speaks to her, and it shows Chief Anderson and I that we will never settle when it comes to number two, that Diane deserves a real partner in that.
Just two quick follow-ups. The Recovery Coach Program, we use AutoCape Health Services? Okay. And then, do we get referrals from the schools at all?
Actually, today I had a nice meeting with Stephanie Broidy, who, she does Behavioral Health Innovators, and right now, we aren't getting as many as I thought that we would, so my goal for this year for sure is to get myself out there more in the schools, and to partner hopefully on some level with Behavioral Health Innovators groups. I want to do more group work for parents of kids who are struggling as well, so that's an avenue that I'm going to hopefully go down this coming year, and because I know that they're out there, I know that, you know, parents need support, students need support, they're even starting programs in the middle school, so it's, it's starting young, so I know they're out there, I just have to reach them somehow or make myself more available so they know I'm there.
I just have one, one, sorry, but I, so do you report to Leah, or do you report to Mike, or do you report to both? Is it matrixed, or how does it work?
I report to both of them.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Just kind of get that feeling.
Yeah, I mean, they're two very different-
Yep.
-types of, of scenarios and situations and clients, so, and sometimes all three of us, so it just really depends, every situation's different.
Technically, Diane is part of the Community Services Department, so technically, she reports to me, but the collaboration is, you know, it, it has to be, we have to have the collaboration we had, we have to make it work.
Gotcha, thank you.
Jill, did you, did, did you have something?
I'll second, third, fourth, everything they've said.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Jill, did you have anything to add about the other position and what you're doing about it, and is, and is the, the morphing of it, or the evolution of it consistent with the original funding that was voted by Town Meeting?
Yes, so the, the position has been revamped, so it was originally a youth behavioral clinician, and I think we just took youth away so that it would be easier to recruit, and also with Diane, with one year on the job, it's, with her establishing the program, it, it's almost better that, unfortunately for her workload, but for us to create a program that we now have a holistic approach to serving our residents, and it doesn't necessarily have to be bifurcated between youth and adults. So that was really important to all of us, me included, and so hopefully, with the public out there checking out our recruitment opportunities on our website, that we're able to get some great candidates and even provide enhanced services.
Thank you. I thank you, all three of you, for, for your presentation. I remember some years ago, Chief Paulina was talking about the, the, the pressure on police officers in dealing with these issues, and he was, I was left with the impression that we were, we were moving into an age when every police officer had to be a social worker as well, and, and that's probably still true, but I think we've taken it in Chatham to a, a higher level, and I, I really think it's, it's working out very well, obviously, from the, the statistics that we know about, so thank you.
Can I just add, I appreciate you mentioning our additions to the Town Manager's report. We're certainly proud to, to add her work in that, and just, I just want to acknowledge Officer Rick Spalding. He's, he's actually working the eve shift tonight, he's actually in between calls. I, I would be remiss if I didn't express the appreciation from my staff. I, I want to get their appreciation, because their, their workload, it's not just it, it that has decreased, it's just the care and the response to these calls with Diane. Whether the, the call number decreases or not, the quality of the care and the quality of the response of these numbers, that quality is always, is going to be increased now, so.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate that.
We're very fortunate to have a superb police department in this town. Thank you, thanks, thank all three of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is review of the RFP Design Guidelines for Scope of Work for the former Ellis property at 190, 127 Old Harbor Road, and the timeline for completion of work. This has been continued from April 15, 2025, and Gloria McPherson, our Director of Housing and Sustainability, is online. Gloria, welcome.
Hi, everyone. Well, that's a tough act to follow. I'm only here to talk about a simple scope of work for design guidelines. If you recall, the town contracted with UTL Architecture and Design to do some test fits for the former Ellis property at 127 Old Harbor Road, the goal of which was to understand development potentials for the site, what makes the most sense regarding density, design of the buildings, massing of the buildings, things like that. And in April, on April 15, UTL presented their final refined test fits to the Select Board, and at that meeting, the board asked about the possibility of UTL doing design guidelines to be included in the RFP for the future development of that property. The goal being that if we had professional design guidelines, then the outcome of the development process would be more in keeping with what the Select Board wants, based on the test fits that you already went through. And so included in your packet is a scope of work. We went back and forth with UTL multiple times to kind of hammer out all these details. Basically, it's going to include written design guidelines, so that, you know, that it's text-based, so that developers can actually see what we want. It's also going to include drawings for a, a visual representation of what we want, evaluation criteria for the RFP, so whenever a municipality disposes of property for the purposes of developing affordable or attainable housing, it has to be done through an RFP process, and you have to have an evaluation criteria. And so these design guidelines would also include that evaluation criteria to make sure that it represents, you know, what the board is looking for. And then in addition to that, they would actually be formatting and doing all of this in the appendix, putting together the evaluation criteria, and, and I thought this was a really great idea. They're also going to put together an evaluation criteria checklist, not for the developer, but for the evaluation committee, so that we'll have boxes to check off as a way of evaluating how well each proposal- evaluating how well each proposal answers the evaluation criteria. The cost for this was put at 15,000. Funds have been identified in the Town Managers Consulting and Engineering Fund, and the timeline for, for the consultants is three months, anticipating if you guys would like to move forward with this, a start in early July and a completion by September 30th. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
So Gloria, just do I, so I can understand this. So when they, if this is approved tonight, when they come back, what happens with that information? Is it a staff project to develop an RFP, which would be presented to the select board? Is that what, what's, how this is going to work?
So I'm going to work in tandem with UTL. I'll be working on the RFP, and it's probably going to be very similar to the other RFPs we've issued for Main Street Meeting House Road, and also for the draft one that's been prepared by the Affordable Housing Trust for Stepping Stones. So I'll be working on that in coordination with UTL, which will be working on the design guidelines and the written design guidelines and illustrations and the evaluation criteria. And it's built into the scope of work that UTL will come back before the select board a couple of times so that you can see the progress that's being made, to make sure that we're heading in the right direction, to tweak anything that you think should be different.
Just one other question. So when we last looked at this, we had three options that were presented to us. You described them, I think, in your cover memo, or I read it somewhere.
Yep.
And we gave some direction to UTL about how we'd like some refinement there. And I think these design guidelines, I guess, are supposed to be consistent with that. When does...
They, yeah.
Go ahead.
I, I was going to say, yeah, they would be consistent with that. But they wouldn't be asking for a specific project. It would be a little bit more general than that.
When does the select board determine which model we want to send out on an RFP? Or models, period, plural?
What do you mean, models?
Well, we had three different options here. One was divide the lot into two lots. Another one was to have, keep the old house and build two other structures. Another was to have a new house, and, and I think there were two, two or three other structures. When is that decision made about which, which choice we want?
So that decision is not going to be made for the RFP. So we can't put out an RFP that asks for a specific project. Because if we do, then it's a bid process as opposed to an RFP, and then we'd have to pay prevailing wage. We're going to put out a general RFP for land disposition and, including plans in the proposal, and we'll put options in the RFP. We can say that we have a preference for the existing house to be preserved. We can say a lot of things, but we can't explicitly ask for a specific project.
Okay. And, sure, any comments from the board or questions?
Yeah, I have some concerns on timing of this project for success. And just, just in generally, I'd like the board to think about the idea of, you know, moving forward with, with the design concepts and leaving it and parking it and pausing it and advancing the Stepping Stone Housing Project. And one of the reasons are, there's a couple of reasons, but mostly it's, you know, the success that we could see with Stepping Stones, it's less controversial, it's met with a little more support, it has a, a larger bang for the buck, you know, potentially. And I think with staff resources being limited and, you know, the idea that whatever we bring forward is going to be a costly adventure, I want to see a success story for affordable, I mean, for attainable housing. And I, you know, we're getting bogged down constantly in 127 with, you know, not liking the project, having conflicts, you know, with the abutters and things that are sort of like a little more messier. I'm not saying abandon 127. I'm saying, I'll put 127 on pause and let's get Stepping Stones Road moving forward. And I don't know, you know, with, with staff, whether this is a challenge or from Jill's perspective, whether it is a challenge, or that we move them both in tandem. But this one is the first, that Stepping Stones is the first one to go before town meeting if we need to do that.
I just wanted to ask, is your, is your thought that, that what's being proposed tonight not be acted on?
No, I'm saying act on the RFP, but then put it on pause. You know, like, I mean, the design, sorry, Gloria.
Design guidelines.
The design guidelines and put it on pause. Because I, and maybe it's, you know, maybe that's too much resources thrown at something that's going to be put on pause, but I really, really think Stepping Stones has more of a success story, would have more of a success than, than 127. I'm, I'm a little like, I, like Jeff always puts PTSD on town meeting and trying to get projects across the board. And, and I'd like to see us have an example that says success and, you know, and then move towards small. 127 is a lot smaller than, than Stepping Stones could potentially be.
Any other comments?
Those are my thoughts.
I mean, I think those are good thoughts. I, I don't mind voting for the design guidelines this evening for 15,000 out of the, out of Jill's, Jill's monies, if you will, her engineering account. Have to, I've just paused for a thought or two on, on what's the priority. I, I agree with Shereen that it'd be really, really neat to have an attainable project, you know, underway and, and supported, so. I, I understand that there's an RFP for Stepping Stones out there or one that's drafted?
I don't know if Gloria has it, but we're, we have some closeness to that whole project, too.
Wonder, I mean, you're suggesting, I, I'm getting the feeling from your suggestion that's a little farther along perhaps.
Well, I just, I want, as I said, I want to see success. I don't want to get bogged down by, you know, a, a lot of stuff that, to me, isn't making sense on what, I mean, 127 makes sense to me. Some of the rationale I hail around why we shouldn't do it doesn't make sense, and I'm really tired of hearing it. I want to see something happen that's going to happen in a positive way.
I guess my, my comment is this. I didn't want housing on, on 127. I, I tried to kill it several times and I lost. So I'm on this board, and town meeting said, put housing there. So, and we've, we've moved along. When it comes to Stepping Stones and 127, if we're going to have attainable housing, we have to go to town meeting for money because you can't use the Affordable Housing Trust money for it. And when the Affordable Housing Trust, well, due respect to them, came to this board and said, hey, give us the responsibility for the RFP, Mr. Matters and I voted no, it belongs here. I don't know what the Affordable Housing Trust is doing with Stepping Stones Road, except in general terms, because I don't watch all their meetings. I didn't really think it was their business to do this, but, you know, that's what was voted, and they have it. And, you know, I, I guess I, I don't have a problem with considering the timing issues on this. I'm sort of reluctant to, to just, well, not to do this, and I know you're not proposing not to do this tonight because we've come so far along with this. And if we put it on hold, then we're going to have to recreate the whole thing. I still get people saying, why are you putting housing on 127? We got letters, we've got a letter recently from somebody.
That's my point exactly right now. I'm not trying to go down and, and kill this project at all. But what I'm saying is this, my, these are my personal thoughts. These are not the thoughts of the, of the Housing Trust. This is what I
Respect that.
I say, and I did bring it up to the Housing Trust when we got an update from staff on 127 and Stepping Stones, that we, as we always do with all the housing projects. And I brought that up then, that I think this should be the priority for the select board. So that has nothing to do with it. We have gotten to the point with 127 where we, where we have, we've had some recommendations. This board has weighed in on it. That's great. I think we need to honor that and move forward. But I think as far as timing of what is going to come first to town meeting should be the larger project that has a little more bang for the buck, and, and, and I think that's Stepping Stones.
I, I hear you. And as with respect to 127, I know I had conversation with one of the abutters who's been following this very carefully, and I don't think that individual was able to participate tonight because there was a conflict. But, so we don't even know whether the ideas that we've been talking about, the three different options are, you know, how they're going to meet with the neighborhood and others in town. So anyway, I just wanted to, you know, voice my historical thoughts on it, but I respect what you're saying, Shereen. Corey?
No, I, I mean, you're not going to get pushback from me to push, push off a little bit 127. I mean, we quickly learned that 127 was not the low-hanging fruit that we kind of pitched it at at one point in time. But Stepping Stone, Stepping, Shereen has a point. I mean, there's a long history with that area parcel. You know, the school recommended it be cleared of surplus inventory, and then went through the town meeting process. You know, back then, I, I definitely thought the town, the school should have kept it, but if we were going to do anything with it, it was going to be housing. Housing is probably the most appropriate thing to do it, you know, and as an alternative. So I think to Shereen's point, I think we, we get frustrated of how slow projects get done. And I do think that would have actually had more success if it was focused on and addressed in an appropriate way. So I don't have any issue with kind of shifting focus on Stepping Stone. I think I could, maybe it could be done quicker and cleaner and more efficient. And I, I will not say anything more about Old Harbor Road. My, you, my, my opinions have been clear, so, but I, I have no problem with kind of shifting focus and respecting staff resources and...
Do you have a position on what to do with this tonight?
I guess my question is, I mean, if we were to endorse this, if they put it on the back shelf procedurally, is that going to muck things up down the road? I mean, are we going to have to revisit this discussion? Or are we just kind of, I know you're not saying stop everything. You're thinking pot, kind of prepping, prepping pause.
Yeah, let's prep and pause. Let's, let's get it, get it in, you know, teed up as far as we want, but let's, you know, let's not waste the, the time and energy of the design, the design consultants and things like that. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, you know, let's, let's get that and put it, put it on the shelf for a little while and shift our focus over to, you know, something that's not going to be met with as much controversy and will be an example for success as a, as a attainable housing project that we use as an ideal and not have all the other stuff that's, you know, I'm quite frankly, I'm a little tired of.
Are we expecting that the, the, the trust is going to forward us or Gloria is going to present us with the RFP, with an RFP on Stepping Stones at some point in the near future?
I, I don't think the trust has been working on an RFP. I think this has been staff working on an RFP. Am I right?
Gloria, do you have anything to say on that?
It's just, um, yeah, so the, I want to say, back in like December and January, the Affordable Housing Trust worked on a draft RFP for the select board to review for Stepping Stones, and that's, that's been finished for months. So I, I definitely appreciate what Shereen is saying, and that's almost like the normal order of how we originally intended to do this. Like, we pushed forward with Stepping Stones, we have a draft RFP. I'm not really sure why it hasn't been put on the agenda since it's been completed, but it's ready for your review.
Okay. Let me ask you two questions, Gloria. So, or a question in two parts. These design guidelines, this pro, phase of the project, if we did nothing tonight and did not approve them, but at some point in the future wanted to come back to them, is that going to set us back somehow financially or project-wise on Old Harbor Road?
I don't know. The price might go up a little bit. I would say that the argument in favor of doing it tonight is that there's already a momentum. We've already had several public hearings on this. The select board's given feedback, the public's given feedback. UTL has their team together that's been involved in this from the beginning with the test fits, so this is almost like a normal progression for them. And I think that you would lose some of that momentum if you held that off.
I thought they were very responsive to our questions and comments. So anyway, any more comment or questions from the board? Jeff?
Yeah, I, I think we lose momentum. I think we should tee it up, and I think we should approve, and then see where we land and see where we are with respect to the RFP for Stepping Stones. I, I don't want to, I feel as though we're fighting ourselves in this stuff. Let's not fight ourselves, let's, let's move forward. So I would, I would, I would move approval of the design guidelines. Thanks.
That's a, that's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Stuart, can I just, I want to ask Gloria a question, then I'll come back to you. Gloria, what, what did you say the timeframe was to get back to us on this?
With the final design guidelines?
Yeah.
From the consultants, three, three months.
Okay. Stuart, you, you had a comment or question?
I was actually pointing to Mr. Phillips, but what, the, you know, my concern with 127 Old Harbor Road is sort of, you know, water under the bridge probably, but I'm, I'm not happy with the way that the town didn't follow the words on the deed. I think that that was profoundly wrong to the, to the people who donated the property. So I, I, I think Shereen has some good points about, you know, we don't, you know, I'd be concerned about, you know, we, we all support affordable housing, but there's resistance for good reason, I think. And, you know, some, some of those issues are probably, you know, I'm, I'm late to the game on that, but I'm, I'm not ready to support moving forward on 127.
Okay. Public comment, Mr., Mr. Phillips?
All right, Brian Phillips, 374 Orleans Road. I agree with Mr. Smith about it not being in line with the wishes of the Ellis, you know, property. And I guess my alternative is to make it a dog park, leave it open space, and then you can always do something with it later. Because once it's affordable housing, it's, it's there, it's stuck to that, you know? So we don't know what we're going to need 10 years down the road or whatnot. Thanks.
Thank you. Any, anybody else online? There's no one here in the audience with a public comment? Okay. So we have a motion that's been seconded to approve these, this design plan, and unless there's a further discussion, I will call a roll. Ms., Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dyke?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
Nay.
Chair votes nay. Two to three. Does not go forward. Next item is to consider appointments and reappointments for various committees. My intention is to take these one by one. Yes?
Can we take a three-minute break?
Sure.
Two minutes.
We're, we're, we'll go in recess for five minutes. Okay. So, we're back in session. So, we have several committees to make appointments and reappointments to, including a number of incumbents. So, we'll take these one by one. The first one is the Energy and Climate Action Committee. There are two members seeking reappointment, Adrienne Lovola and Sarah Griscum. They're seeking reappointment each to a three-year term through June 30th, 2028. They were omitted from a slate of candidates presented on June 10th, which we did approve because there was a delay in their response. There, I'll take a motion to reappoint both of them.
Mr. Chair, I move to reappoint Adrienne Lovola and Sarah Griscum as members of the Energy and Climate Action Committee through June 30th, 2028, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
It's been seconded. I'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The next is an appointment to the Historic Business District Commission. We reviewed, we interviewed incumbent Darcy Sequin and the incumbent alternate Timothy Gilmore. Ms. Sequin would be appointed to a three-year term through June 30th, 2028. And Mr. Gilmore has a one-year term through, term through June 30th, 2026. Does someone want to make those two motions? We'll take them together.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Darcy Sequin as a member of the Historic Business District Commission through June 30th, 2028, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
I move to reappoint Timothy Gilmore as an alternate member of the Historic Business District Commission through June 30th, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
We'll consider that a consolidated motion.
Second.
And it's seconded. Now, call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The next is the Planning Board. And we interviewed incumbent member Warren Chain. And he would be appointed to a three-year term through June 30th, 2028. Does someone want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I will make it, but I move to reappoint Warren Chain as a member of the Planning Board through June 30th, 2028, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
I'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next is the Human Services Committee.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. I was just going to point out, there are no open seats on this committee. There are two candidates seeking reappointment, and there is a third candidate that we interviewed. The third candidate is Valerie Mowbray. The incumbent members are Ann Wade and Patricia Gibson. We interviewed both of them for reappointment. And I will ask, well, we'll take each position separately because we have three candidates. Can I have a nomination for the first?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Valerie Mowbray to the Human Services Committee through June 30th, 2028, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other nominations for that position?
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Ann Wade to the Human Services Committee through June 30th, 2028, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Is there a second to that nomination?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other nominations to that position, one position? Okay. If, if not, we'll call the roll and you, you will indicate the person that you would vote to appoint either Ann Wade or Valerie Mowbray. Ms. Davis?
Valerie Mowbray.
Mr. Dykens?
Ann Wade.
Mr. Matters?
Ann Wade.
Mr. Smith?
Valerie Mowbray.
And the chair votes Ann Wade. Now, we have another position on that committee. Do I have a nomination? No other nomination?
Can I re, can I nominate Valerie again?
Yes.
I'm, I move to nominate Valerie Mowbray to the Human Services Committee through June 30th, 2028, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Any other nominations?
Move to appoint Pat Gibson to the Human Services Committee through June 30th, 2028, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So, we, again, we have two candidates, Ann Wade, I'm sorry, Valerie Mowbray and, and Patricia Gibson.
Pat Gibson.
Okay. Call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Valerie Mowbray.
Mr. Dykens?
Pat Gibson.
Mr. Matters?
Patricia Gibson.
Mr. Smith?
Valerie Mowbray.
Chair votes Valerie Mowbray. So, she is appointed, is that three to two?
Yep.
Okay. Next is the Parks and Recreation Commission. And we have, there are no open seats, but two incumbents seeking reappointment, Meredith Frye and David Eldridge. We interviewed both of them. A third candidate is Seal Harrington. Interviewed her as well. So, we, we'll do the same thing. We have two positions. Let's take the first position. Do we have any nominations for that?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Meredith Frye. Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations for that position? Okay. We'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, Meredith is reappointed. And the next position, do I have any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint David Eldridge as a member of the Park and Rec Commission through June 30th, 2028, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
And it's been seconded. Any other nominations? Call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So, he's reappointed. Shellfish Advisory Committee is next. Okay. So, this is interesting because Mr. Davis was here thinking he needed to be re-interviewed. Could you just qualify? Because we have multiple candidates.
Sure. Yeah. So, initially, at the board's directive, any committee, any advisory committee that had new candidates and incumbents, you had asked to re-interview people. However, during that process, you interviewed two candidates and then one person resigned from the committee. And in the interest of saving all of your time and energy, the other candidates, I did not schedule, Mr. Davis being one of them. So, what you have before you are, Mr. Davis and Barry Greco did not get re-interviewed because there was now an open seat, which kind of negated the need for the interviews. And then the new candidate, Alan St. Pierre, you did interview. So, that is why this is a little different than the other ones because the process had begun, but then there was no longer a need.
And it's an advisory committee and not a regulatory board, so we didn't have to. And, okay. So, we've got four, five positions, four incumbents, Patricia Freeland, Jeff Hayner, Bob Davis, Barry Greco, all of whom would, if, could be appointed to, for terms expiring June 30th, 2028. And we have a new candidate, and there's an open, there's a s, open seat that expires June 30th, 2026. So, I will entertain, I would suggest, if it's the will of the board, that we would have one motion to appoint the five, the four incumbents through June 30th. Does someone want to make that motion?
I'll make the four because I think Alan is till 2026, not 2028. So, I move to appoint Pat Freeland, Jeff Hayner, Bob Davis, and Barry Greco to the Shellfish Advisory Committee through June 30th, 2028, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Second.
All right. I will call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Is there a motion for Mr. St. Pierre?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Alan St. Pierre to the Shellfish Advisory Committee through June 30th, 2026, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
And a second.
I'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. And the last is the Waterways Advisory Committee. One open seat. We've interviewed two candidates, Peter Schock and Peter Taylor. Is there a nomination?
Yes. Oh, go ahead.
I'll make a nomination, Peter Taylor.
Is there a second? The chair will second. Is there another nomination?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Peter Schock to the Waterways Committee through June 30th, 2028, unless sooner revoked or a successor is appointed.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So, we have both, both candidates nominated and seconded. We'll call the roll. Ms. Davis?
Peter Schock.
Mr. Dykens?
Peter Schock.
Mr. Matters?
Peter.
Schock.
Mr. Smith?
Peter Taylor.
The chair votes Peter Taylor. So, it's three to two. And Mr. Schock is appointed. Thank you. Kathy, when, since Mr. Davis was here this evening, could you let him know what we did?
I send out, yeah, I have a, a process.
So, he doesn't think he has to come back on the eighth of July? Next is the Town Manager's Monthly Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I can see the late hour. So, I will just highlight a few items and certainly available to answer any questions. Friday, we were able to open Goose Pond back. The sinobacteria potential for concern was lifted. So, the regular, normal, normal use of the pond for recreational facility, activities is open. And then we had the town restrooms at 549 open as well. They're beautiful. They are handicapped accessible. There's a new handicap parking space behind the building right near the bathrooms. And it was funded through ARPA funds. And with those ARPA grant funds, it allowed us to keep the funds that were appropriated through town meeting and for various facilities, improvements for ADA and accessibility to re-designate them to other projects. So, that work is continuing. But a really great job for the town restrooms. And there's pictures before and afters. Everybody loves a makeover. But it's really, it's really great. And then the Natural Resources Division received a grant for dredging, $358,000 for FY 2026 annual grant round. And so, they've been very successful in the past. And again, this augments the funding that is provided by the town. And then our employee years of service is anniversary for July. You can tell July is the start of the fiscal year. We have a lot of anniversary dates. But notably, the, the many folks that are on our team that have been here for 10 years and more. So, the greatest longevity at this time was Kenny Friend in our DPW department with 34 years. Mike Anderson, our chief here for 29 years. Ryan Gates, another DPW foreman at 27 years. Gerard Smith, fire lieutenant, and many firefighters and captains have been here for 22 years or more. And just, I just want to be brief about this and noting that the most, the newest person on board was Christine O'Grady as our town planner here for one year. Bree, who's behind the window there for Chatham TV, she's been here for two years as our assistant media coordinator. And then we noted the positions that we're still hiring. Again, this was prepared on Friday, so we'll, we'll continue to update it. And then a status of the seasonal employees that have been hired to date. Kathy does a really great job of indexing the various project updates. So, those page numbers are there as well as the hits on our social media and our Chatham TV Productions YouTube account. A lot of great programming that's done. I know that Shauna was in conversation today with the Orpheum Theater, and they had asked to run some of our shorts as well. Most of our behind the stage or behind the scenes are no longer than 10 minutes, but there's a couple of public service announcements that will be shown at the Orpheum. So, it's really cool for us and happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I really like the photographs that have been added to this report now. It makes it a lot easier. I, I, I'm going to ask if anyone else has any questions, but I had a question. Are you, regarding the CFAL project, which is discussed in the report, in the Council on Aging, are you prepared to indicate who has been retained as either the project manager or the design, the design group? Are you, is, are you ready with that information?
Sure. I could, I can announce that too. So, we've solicited requests for qualifications for the owner's project manager. And the team that reviewed had recommended Palmeroy and Associates. So, they will be our, our owner's project manager. I know many of you have seen the face of Rick Palmeroy, but there's, there's a whole team that works with him. And so, we'll have the designated person. But that, that had to be done by state law first. And then the second, we did a request for qualifications for the designer services, architect services. Catalyst was, had submitted, and they were ranked the highest responsible and responsive candidate. So, I don't have a contract with Catalyst yet. We're just waiting for them to return it to us. And so, everything is on schedule as we had announced back in May at town meeting. I'm moving forward with the temporary relocations and everything. So, I think this should be a really great project and a really great start, especially with known entities of both the, the project manager and the architect.
And Kurt Raiber is Catalyst, and he's, he's the one that, that came up with the preliminary concept and also did the Eldridge Garage project. So...
Yes.
Any, any other comments or questions for Jill on the Town Manager's Report? Okay. Thank you for that. And I will entertain a motion to...
We'll adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
In a second.
Second.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Dykens?
Aye.
Mr. Matters?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are adjourned at 9:32. And the chair votes aye. We are adjourned at 9:32.